Good evening, everybody. Welcome to a Bellevue Regular City Council meeting for May 8, 2023. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
So we have four proclamations tonight, and what we're going to do is we'll have each council member read the proclamation. After they've read the proclamation, if there's somebody here to speak to it, they'll be invited to come up to the dais and speak, and then we'll move on to the next proclamation. And after we finish the four, we'll come down and we'll take four separate pictures. So Councilmember Stokes, you are reading the Affordable Housing Week proclamation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable housing homes within communities that provide opportunity, and whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as, quote, "housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities," unquote, and whereas the State Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County needs nearly 200,000 net new housing units for households at or below 80% of area median income, and whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate-income housing households, and whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recognize safe, healthy, and affordable housing within communities of opportunity as key social determinants of health, and whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas, united to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. Now therefore I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through 13, 2023, as Affordable Housing Week in Bellevue, and commit to actions and efforts to ensure Bellevue residents can live with dignity and safe, healthy, and affordable homes.
Thank you.
It is a safe last sign of Lynn Robinson, Mayor.
Okay, perfect. So we have here to accept this proclamation Jody Alberts, Chad Vaculon, and Brady Nordstrom from the Housing Development Consortium, Eastside Housing Roundtable, and the Eastside Affordable Housing Coalition. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. This is the eighth year that the Housing Development Consortium has been coordinating Affordable Housing Week, and the City of Bellevue has been strong supporters and endorsers all the way through, so we are really grateful for that and for the work that you've been doing to bring more affordable homes to the City of Bellevue. Part of the goals that we have for Affordable Housing Week are not only to call attention to the level of need, but to really dive into kind of the policy solutions that we have to bring more homes to our communities. So part of that includes, we have 16 events for Affordable Housing Week that are, you know, go across the gambit of different solutions and areas that pertain to affordable housing with very different partners that are contributing to those events. So we invite you all to join us as you can to attend those events. And those partnerships are diverse because it does take us all to meet the housing needs that we have for our community. So with me, I have two very important partners of ours that I'd like to hand it off to and see if they can say a couple of words. So Brady.
Yeah, thank you again. It's, I think that what we're trying to frame here is that this truly is a challenge that will take all of us to solve, and we appreciate the city's commitment to this, your commitment to this, staff's commitment to this, also the frontline workers that are out there that are doing the work on the ground with the immediate needs of people as we look for long-term solutions. And also, there's 30-plus organizations in the Eastside Affordable Housing Coalition that are working as well to come up with ideas that can work in Bellevue. And so just thank you all again, and thank you to all the residents that are passionate about this.
Yes, thank you so much for bringing awareness to this issue. As members, in addition to the Eastside Housing Roundtable, representing both the nonprofit side and industry, we really understand that it takes an entire community and multiple perspectives really in order to address this complex issue. And so we just really appreciate the City of Bellevue's partnership and staff as well, all the work that they've done in handling it. And I look forward to moving forward because that means we're going to be closer to those 200,000 units. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Older Americans Month, and that's Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas President John F. Kennedy designated May as Senior Citizens Month to pay tribute to older people across the country. In 1980, President Carter changed the name to Older Americans Month. And whereas the City of Bellevue includes a growing number of older persons with a wealth of knowledge and experience, 14% of the city's residents are 65 years of age or older. And whereas people are living longer, over the last decade, the average life expectancy in King County rose to 82.3 years, exceeding both the national and state averages. And whereas, in a recent survey for the Human Needs Update, nearly a third of Bellevue residents noted lack of services for aging adults as an issue. And whereas the City of Bellevue provides opportunities to meet the changing needs of a more active, diverse, older adult population. And whereas the Bellevue Network on Aging, a group of volunteers and staff, is dedicated to healthy aging in the community by promoting awareness of needs and resources that support older adults throughout life's transitions. And whereas the City of Bellevue engages older adults through education, recreation, and service, encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now therefore I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Older Americans Month in Bellevue, and urge every resident to recognize the value of older adults, help to create an inclusive society, and recognize those who support older adults as essential contributors to the strength of our community.
Thank you. And we have Abigail Brown from Bellevue Network on Aging. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmembers on, and thank you, Mayor Robinson, and everybody else on the council, esteemed council members. I have some prepared comments here because I want to make sure I get my facts right. Again, as part of the proclamation, it says, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the 2019 American Community Survey, those aged 65 and above equal 14% of the Bellevue population. That was 2019. The Bellevue Network on Aging appreciates the council for this proclamation, recognizing the value of older adults and their contribution to the community of Bellevue. We would like to encourage residents of Bellevue that identify with being an older adult to celebrate in the following ways: embrace the opportunity to change, pushing boundaries by not letting age define your limits; explore the rewards of growing older; continue to grow through reading, listening, classes, and creative activities; stay engaged in your community by volunteering, working, mentoring, and taking part in activities in the community, and forming relationships as it's an essential ingredient of well-being. Thank you again for your commitment to ensuring older adults' needs are represented in the city's programs, services, and planning efforts.
Thank you. Thank you for your service on the commission, the network. Okay, next, we have Bike Everywhere Month. Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House.
Thank you, Mayor. My pleasure to read this proclamation. So whereas across Washington State, thousands of people travel by bicycle for transportation and recreation, providing health, environmental, and economic benefits, and whereas building bicycle-friendly communities is known to improve people's health, quality of life, and community spirit while improving safety and reducing pollution. And whereas Cascade Bicycle Club, Washington Bikes, the City of Bellevue's Choose Your Way Bellevue Program, and other organizations support Bike Everywhere Month during May. And whereas these groups encourage greater public awareness of bicycle travel and safety. And whereas bicycling is an affordable, accessible mode of transportation for people of different abilities, races, and income levels to help reduce social inequities. And whereas Friday, May 19, 2023, is Bike Everywhere Day, which promotes bicycling as an important travel option. Now therefore I, Lynn Robinson, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Bike Everywhere Month in Bellevue, and urge all residents to join in appreciating the unique benefits bicycling brings throughout the year. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you. And I think we have Mike Ingram from our staff at City of Bellevue. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, members of the council. So the Bike Month proclamation that Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House just rode, read, spoke to the community and personal benefits associated with bicycling. I would simply add that with every passing year, Bellevue becomes a better and better place to be out riding your bicycle. So we are making incremental improvements every year to the streets and improving facilities so that a broader range of people can get out and enjoy the benefits that bicycling offers. And likewise, new trail segments generate that opportunity. And so I would urge that everybody consider this month to get out and explore and see what's there and discover what's new.
Terrific. Thank you.
So it's a good month to do that at the start of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Stick around so we can get a picture with you when we're all done. Here, we have one more proclamation to do. And that's National Police Week, and we have Councilmember Robertson reading that.
Thank you. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bellevue Police Department. And whereas the FBI reported 49,649 assaults against U.S. law enforcement officers in 2021, resulting in approximately 15,300 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded officer death in 1791, over 23,700 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas 556 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 224 officers killed in 2022 and 332 officers killed in the previous years. And whereas included in this year's Roll Call of Heroes is Bellevue Police Officer Jordan Jackson, who died when his police motorcycle was struck on November 21, 2022. And whereas Bellevue Police Detective Thomas Ray's name will also be inscribed on the memorial this year, Detective Ray suffered a fatal heart attack while on duty on January 22, 2002. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 35th Annual Candlelit Vigil on May 13, 2023. And whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff that day. And whereas law enforcement officers are a vital part of our communities, standing ready to respond to emergencies and risk their own safety and health in the execution of their duties to protect and serve. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 11 through 17, 2023, as National Police Week in Bellevue, and encourage all residents and businesses to recognize and express appreciation for our law enforcement officers for their honorable profession in public service to us all. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue.
Thank you. We're lucky to have Chief Shirley here tonight to speak to us. Welcome.
So on behalf of the men and women of the Bellevue Police Department, I'd like to thank the mayor, deputy mayor, and entire council for the proclamation. It does make it extra special this year as I have the honor of traveling to D.C. in a few days to represent our department and honor our fallen officers, and their families will be there as well. So thank you guys very much for the proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, so let's gather up our affordable housing folk first, and we'll do pictures. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are seven pre-registered speakers. So before I start calling names, I'll remind the public of a few of our rules. Thank you. The council oral communications is for a period to last no more than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. In addition, I need to remind everyone that in compliance with Washington State Public Disclosure laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no election-related topics may be discussed during oral communications or other public participation portions of the agenda. This includes discussion of ballot measures, endorsement of candidates or political parties, or speaking on behalf of a campaign, including your own. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature will be given a verbal warning as this is considered a disruption to the meeting, and you may be asked to leave council chambers. And with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Paul Clark, who's joining us here in person.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House, council members, deputy, or City Manager Miyake. You're facing a crucial decision tonight with our city's public safety and the balance. As you know, the temporary action taken by the legislature in response to the Blake decision expires January 1, at which point state laws prohibiting the possession of all drugs, including heroin, methamphetamines, and fentanyl, will expire. I urge the city council to mitigate this danger by passing a local ordinance prohibiting the possession and public use of these controlled substances. You have the opportunity to take the first step towards protecting our community tonight. Though I believe passing this ordinance is a common sense decision broadly supported in Bellevue, I'd like to address some of the possible objections. First, that the legislature will fix this in a special session at some point in the next few weeks. The Blake ruling came down February 25 of 2021. The legislature's had over two years to provide a permanent fix here. I don't believe it's responsible to jeopardize our city's safety under the assumption that some kind of last-second fix is just going to materialize. Second, I know that there are some that may think that drug legalization isn't so radical. After all, Washingtonians legalized cannabis a number of years back, and other countries do have laxer drug laws. However, though some nations have implemented partial decriminalization, that's nothing like what we're talking about today. Under progressive policies in Portugal and the Netherlands, for example, public drug use is still prohibited, and possession often remains a civil offense with consequences. Drug treatment is pressed for disruptive drug users in a way that it is not in King County. And agree or disagree with those countries' policies, they were at least put in place in a planned way, not triggered by a legal accident. Failing to take action by January, sorry, July 1 will not be following in the footsteps of these other nations. It will be choosing to engage in a radical social experiment, subjecting Bellevue residents, workers, students, and visitors to an unacceptable risk of drug-related crime. Furthermore, implicitly legalizing fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, meth, and other dangerous substances will give a green light to traffickers preying on those struggling with addiction. With no laws prohibiting possession, police will have a harder time fighting traffickers of these lethal drugs. In conclusion, I urge the council to take the first step tonight towards protecting our city. Time is short. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peggy Price.
And we don't clap here. Thank you so much. You can raise your hands, and we'll understand your approval for it. Thanks.
Peggy Price.
Hello.
Excuse me, just for one moment. Mr. Zimmerman, would you please not speak while somebody else is speaking? It's hard for us to hear. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, I'm Peggy Price. I'm with Newcastle Trails. I live in Newcastle. I'm currently building a trail up the west side of Cougar Mountain.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. It's hard for us to hear. Mr. Zimmerman, this is a warning. I'm going to ask you not to speak while other people are speaking at public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Any rate, this connects to the Save Coal Creek area there between Red Town and across Lakemont to Meltswanston Old Property and Coal Creek Park. And the pinch point between the proposed residential development and the south border of that corridor is pretty narrow, and it would crowd together all the users, including the animals who have to use it. Crossing Lakemont isn't ideal for anyone. And a wildlife corridor going under Lakemont along Coal Creek would be really helpful. Parking at the north end of that residentially-zoned property could prevent people having to cross Lakemont, and it would also separate them from the animals trying to go along Coal Creek at the south end. I've noticed when I'm out doing trail construction, there's a migration every daily of deer and bear. They go up to Cougar Mountain during the morning, and in the evening, they come back down and go down to the valleys. So avoiding problems with, they're getting down into the valley and problems getting back up without crowding them together would be really helpful and reduce stress on the animals. So I'm hoping you'll be able to do whatever you can to allow this unique corridor to bring back its role in Bellevue's diverse park system. I believe it's the only wild corridor left in Bellevue that connects with other large wild areas, especially if the traffic on Lakemont doesn't create a scary barrier that can't be circumvented. So that's, I'm encouraging you guys to see what you can do to make sure that that residential property, instead of being developed, is actually incorporated as part of the park and the wildlife corridor. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heidi Dean.
I think Mr. Clark said it so much more eloquently than I could, but I'm here to urge you to move forward with authorizing the staff time to come up with the law that would protect Bellevue. I watched the legislative session this year, and quite frankly, I don't, the common sense is in short supply down in Olympia, as far as I'm concerned. And I am not putting my faith in our legislators in finding a solution to this or passing one that's going to protect Bellevue citizens. So I'm looking each one of you in the eye and asking you to be a B for Bellevue council member and to pass the law to protect us. It says a lot when you think that crazy Seattle is, they're looking at passing a law. And Bellingham, which is only slightly nuttier, or slightly less nutty than Seattle, is also looking at passing a law. Don't forget, I'm from Bellingham. So, I mean, I was a little worried because I wasn't hearing anything from Bellevue. So when I saw this on the agenda, I was very happy about that. Please, please, please do the right thing for Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker on our list is Joyce Hansberry, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Hansberry, can you hear me?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. Sorry, it's, sorry, Ms. Hansberry. Yeah, I'll get you in in just a second. All right, your time begins now.
My name is Joyce Hansberry. I'm the manager of Ashwood Court Apartments, which I think is the most beautiful, affordable, senior, low-income housing in downtown Bellevue. I've been here 18 years. I love Bellevue, but I get calls from people every day looking for housing, either for themselves, I have to be 62 or older, or for their parents. The people that are here, I want to say, are here because they love Bellevue. A lot of them have grown up in Bellevue, raised their kids in Bellevue. They're your mothers, your grandmothers, your grandfathers. They're former teachers in the Bellevue school system, people that have been here their entire lives. We just need more affordable housing for seniors. Most of them could not afford $8,000 a month. Most of them could not afford $8,000 a month to live. Our rates are very affordable. We're tax credit. I invite any of you who would like to come and visit to see our facility. We're completely independent living, but we do have a lot of amenities. And I just, my heart is heavy when I have to turn people away because I do not have vacancies. I only have 50 apartments, but I bet I could rent 250 more. So please, consider affordable housing for seniors for Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Patrick Seth Yanethen, who's also joining us virtually. Mr. Seth Yanethen, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
Good evening to the City Council and all the other attendees. My name is Patrick Seth Yanethen, a longtime resident of Bellevue. In recent meetings, I believe I have attended three of them and expressed concerns about the Bellevue Police Department. I heard earlier condolences for a foreign officer. And by my expressing my concerns, I do not mean to disrespect or belittle any of the officers who might have died or been injured in the course of their duty. I am just expressing concerns that I have experienced personally. And I believe I have referred to in the past my concern about the lack of body cameras, and I was assured by somebody that that item has been budgeted for, but I have not received any confirmation about that. I have also referred to a dysfunctional Office of Accountability, which is manned by one of the police officers part-time, and the difficulty in uploading online reports to the database, which are most often than not, more often than not, rejected without even being read fully. But today, I have another concern, and that concern is something I would call the Bellevue Police Department's Friends and Family Policy. I use that term sort of akin to the Friends and Family Policy some large companies and retail stores offer to their employees. And by that, I mean I have often encountered people in plainclothes accompanying uniformed police officers when they arrest me or visit my home. And upon being asked who such plainclothes people are, I am, I have usually been told that they are detectives. They don't need uniforms, they don't need badges of any kind. They are detectives. Sadly, my experience with such Friends and Family of police officers has not been good. I have lost property to the tune of several hundreds of dollars. The most recent in reverse chronological order.
Mr. Seth Yanethen, your time has expired.
Oh, okay. Next time.
Thank you. This, next speaker on our list is Susan Sherman. And Ms. Sherman, I don't see you joined virtually by name, and I don't see you here in person. If you're online, can you please use the raise hand function to identify yourself? Okay. Ms. Hansberry, I see you identified. Is Ms. Sherman with you?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Your time begins now.
Okay. My name is Susan Sherman. I live at Ashwood Court Apartments at 11018 Northeast 11th Street on the north end of Bellevue. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of your efforts to increase the amount of affordable housing in Bellevue. Ashwood Court, where I live, is an affordable housing apartment for seniors who earn less than 50% of the area median income. And I can tell you that every day I speak to people who really, really need affordable housing, and some that can't even afford our prices. So what you're doing with the plan downtown is really good, even if it's really just a drop in the bucket. I want to encourage you to keep going and do more. We need more housing in Bellevue, a lot more housing, and not just in downtown. We need more housing for people of every age, every income level, but especially affordable housing for people who grew up in Bellevue, who work in Bellevue, who've raised their families in Bellevue, and have contributed to the city's successes, and who want to keep living in Bellevue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Gary Campon. Yeah, thank you.
Gary Campon, Newcastle. I'm speaking in favor of Save Coal Creek. I support preserving the historic Milt Swanson property for public use. I'm the president of Newcastle Trails, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit founded in 1999. We've always regarded Bellevue as a model for excellence with a fine parks department and a great system of parks and trails. Newcastle's trail signs and trails are modeled after Bellevue's. In the past, Newcastle Trails hosted trail walks of up to 200 people using the Coal Creek and Cougar Mountain trails, with walkers drawn from a wide region. Locally, we've led family trail walks in cooperation with the Coal Creek YMCA. We start at the Y and end at the Swanson property. When Milt Swanson was alive, his informal mining museum was a highlight. Kids loved it. Local history folk could carry on that tradition if the property were preserved. That area is unique, an old barn, meadows and trees, a last remnant of the 1800s farm landscape. Once developed, it can never be replaced. It occupies a key position in a trail and wildlife corridor stretching from Lake Washington to Cougar Mountain and the Cascades. The Coal Creek Trail is an important regional trail. It links the East Rail to Cougar Mountain and connects at many points with Newcastle's trail system. With a growing population and increasing access by public transportation, usage is bound to grow. The Coal Creek natural area has woodlands and trails and wildlife and history and waterfalls. It's one of Bellevue's great treasures, just as New York Central Park and Paris Notre Dame Cathedral are treasures of those cities. And the Swanson property is a unique historical landscape in a key location where the wooded corridor meets Cougar Mountain at the Red Town Trailhead. Putting a development here would be like putting a skyscraper in the middle of Central Park or replacing Notre Dame's rose window with a billboard. Please maintain Bellevue's tradition of excellence in parks and trails. Save this historic treasure for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final speaker on our preregistered list is Alex Zimmerman.
Yes, you called me?
Yes, Mr. Zimmerman.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The high, my dirty, stupid crooks. A Nazi pig, a Democrat mafia. My name, Alex Zimmerman. I'm candidate for ship to the moon. Thirty seconds about drug. Hundred billion dollars we spend every year, thirty billion dollars for defund. Hundred billion dollars is a black market, what is don't have history, you know what it mean? It's very interesting. In board, South Board, for last few years, you know what is an under Democrat mafia, totally open. So I riot speak to 150,000 idiot who live in this city. Stop elect this Democrat for many years, ten, twenty, thirty. They destroy Bellevue totally. About bike, I think in bike, people who drive bike is a criminal, a bandito. You support this because you're criminal and bandito too. We spend a billion and, million and million dollars for bike, who don't have, pay for license, never pay taxes, never use rules. A privilege what is ever English aristocrat don't have in America. I remember myself when I'm 250 years ago. And about housing, guys, you freaking degenerate idiot who sit in this chamber for many years, ten, twenty, thirty, same people. And look what has happened in Bellevue right now. I live this thirty-five year. Fifty thousand people cannot afford apartment. Rent approximately for small two-bedroom apartment, thirty thousand per years. Are you understand what I'm talking? Fifty thousand people in Bellevue cannot ever breathe because you crooks and you all have a housing for million bucks, from my understanding. Maybe, maybe more. You don't do nothing for ten years. Only talking, 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 talking. I hear you for how many year? Thirty-five? And thirty year I present here? Guys, I speak right now for 150,000 people. When Amazon come and bring another thirty thousand from jungle slave, you know what it mean? With approximate salary hundred thousand plus, you know what it mean? I cannot imagine what is will be here. And they approve this. New York not approve. I not approve, but they approve. Who's this crook who make us life miserable? Look, Bellevue look like a tsunami come, you know what it mean? A Russian war come, you know what it mean? Look what has happened. Street, building nightmare for last ten year. Kill totally everything what is I love in Bellevue for thirty plus year. The high, my lovely Fuhrer, a bandito. Thank you very much.
That is the end of our preregistered list. We do still have a few minutes of oral communications. Before I ask if there's any additional speakers, I need to just mention that under item 11A this evening, there's a land use quasi judicial item, which we cannot take any public comment on. With that being said, is there anyone in the audience with us or joining us virtually who would like to comment? Kelly Much, I see your hand raised. I do have you on our public hearing list, though. I'm going to ask you really quickly, were you planning on speaking on the public hearing?
I'm here to speak about affordable housing.
Oh, perfect. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Much, and I'm a native East Sider. I am very much pro affordable housing. I live in affordable housing. Planning for more affordable housing needs to be looked into. I feel it's not a time for small incremental work. There's not enough housing to accommodate all. Many current affordable housing units are quite mature. They need upgrades or replacement. More affordable housing is needed. I've been homeless, and my friends and fellow homeless need a place to live. There needs to be, my needs are small, a kitchen, a shower, and accessible service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, sir?
Just for clarification, why are comments on land use code proposals not currently available?
It's the land use item, which is a quasi judicial rezone. Are you referring to the public hearing we're holding later this evening on an interim official control?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that will come up on item 9A.
You'll have a, you'll have a chance to comment then. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Do you have extra time for me to comment on the drug issue?
Yes, we do still have about five minutes of oral cons left. Please come to the table. If you could state your name first for the record, thank you.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Pat Senior. We live in Bellevue with my husband and my daughter. She's a University of Washington student, and I just would like to let you know how difficult it's been for her regarding the drug issue in Seattle. She rides the bus and on a daily basis. Okay. She rides the bus, and on an almost daily basis, she's faced with some difficult challenges. We talk about it on a regular basis. I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous. For example, one of the worst things was being offered drugs on the bus. People on the light rail, she's, they're potentially threatening. This is a single person who's in her twenties trying to take the light rail to get to school. And she, on a daily basis, has to look and make sure that she's not going to be attacked, harassed. She sees illegal activity on a daily basis on the light rail, on the bus. She tries to navigate her way on the light rail on the bus during certain times, on certain buses, where there may be not as much, as many issues. She's had friends who've been attacked physically, thrown up against the wall. Sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight about this. I didn't even know it was an option. What else has she had to deal with? Her friend, who's particularly small and Asian, was harassed and said to her face, "Do you know what happens to little women like you?" This is scary for someone in their twenties to have to listen to. So this is happening out there, and people may not be aware of it. We're kind of spoiled in Bellevue. We don't have to deal with it as much. But I'm telling you, this is stuff happening on a regular basis in Seattle, and it's really scary for them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say, I hope that your daughter, if anytime she feels threatened, does call 911 and report.
She's had a friend who was hit by a car while she's riding her bike. She called 911. Police didn't come.
Well, that's not a reason not to call. I'm just saying, make sure she keeps calling so there's a record of what's going on, so they understand the severity of what she's going through.
Well, there's a defund the police issue in Seattle, so they don't have the police presence. It's not, I'm not, I, we support the police. But if you're defunding the police, there's just not enough police to respond to these kind of issues that may or may not be, you know, get out of control quickly.
Well, I hope that you will testify at the Seattle City Council meeting as well because it's a powerful story. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
We do have time for one additional speaker. I don't see any hands online. And, oh, Ms. Hammer.
Can, before you speak, can you tell us what the total is for the different?
If you would put that last comment in for, I would say we're at three for the council business item around drug use. That's the only item we're topped out at.
Okay. So the drug use is topped out? Yes.
In support, yes.
Okay. So I'll just read this I found in a, it's by John Adams, about our Constitution. And he said the, oh, he was one of the founders of our United States of America. "The end of the institution, maintenance, and administration of government is to secure the existence of the body politic, to protect it, and to furnish the individuals who compose it with the power of enjoying in safety and tranquility their natural rights and the blessings of life. And whenever these great objects are not obtained, the people have a right to alter the government and to take measures necessary for their safety, happiness, and prosperity. The body politic is formed by a voluntary association of individuals. It is a social compact by which the whole people covenants with each citizen and each citizen with the whole people, that all shall be governed by certain laws for the common good." Thank you for supporting the common good in Bellevue.
And that brings us to the end of oral cons. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have, under council business and new initiatives, we have a remote participation request. Deputy Mayor, could you make a motion, please?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to allow Mayor Robinson to participate remotely in the May 22nd council meeting.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you very much. And then we have a request under council business and new initiatives from Deputy Mayor regarding the Blake decision. And so I'm going to let Deputy Mayor, I'm going to have you introduce it, and then you can make a motion, and then we shall discuss.
Great. Hopefully pretty straightforward as as quite other cities that have already adopted or in the process of adopting similar type of ordinances because unfortunately, in the twenty twenty-three session, the Washington State Legislature unfortunately could not agree on laws to protect our community from the impacts of controlled substance abuse and help those suffering from addiction and help them find a path to treatment. So without the passage of a practical solution under state law, starting July first, there will be no meaningful way to prohibit the unlawful possession or use of dangerous drugs, including heroin, fentanyl, et cetera, in the city of Bellevue. Now, clearly, in Bellevue, we lead with compassion, and when it comes to substance abuse. However, it's critical also to have consequences available for our police officers and to hold people accountable for their criminal actions against a community member or a business. Without proper support and encouragement, a person may not with a substance use disorder cannot be expected to decide to stop using, and the power of addiction continues to control individuals, and there's no incentive to end that cycle of use. So while individuals are dying of overdoses or watch drug-related property and violent crimes negatively impacting our neighborhoods and businesses, this is, I believe, a straightforward ordinance for staff to begin drafting legislation, specifically the city attorney's office, and adopt an ordinance to make it a crime to knowingly possess or publicly use controlled substances in the city of Bellevue. Now, although Governor Inslee has recently called for a special session to address this issue, there is no guarantee that the legislature will be able to reach an agreement. I hope they do, but think of this as a backup plan in case they do not before that July first deadline. So I think it's critical that we act now to keep our sidewalks, our parks, our playgrounds safe and drug free. As you may be aware, King County has already seen record-breaking overdose deaths, and we're on par to break that record again unfortunately this year. So I will now introduce the ordinance and would certainly or the motion and certainly would appreciate my colleague's support. I move to have the city attorney's office conduct any necessary research and provide the council with potential options to adopt an ordinance making it a crime, either misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor, to knowingly possess or publicly use controlled substances, except cannabis or counterfeit substances.
Second.
Great. So I'll open it to comments or questions. We'll start with Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I support the staff doing the work. I guess some questions or.
Do we have a staff representation to come up and answer questions? Or do we just talk to you?
Yes.
Diane, okay, let's address.
Respond to questions.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just go into my question, my comments. And I'll just say, I think one of the challenging things for me, I know there's a balance here, is criminalizing someone who does have a substance use disorder and and needs the supports. I guess what I would like to see when this comes back is an assessment to understand the disproportionate, any disproportionate impacts in our community. If it's if it's focused on public use, for example, you know, there's a there's members of our community who may also be consuming, right, or using, who we just don't see, but we see a certain segment of people who maybe use or or possess. I would like to understand the disproportionate impacts there. And then in the in the code or ordinance that comes back, some nuance that considers occurrence, how many times have they surfaced, I guess, that person who experienced substance use disorder? And then some nuance and sort of possession, personal possession versus intent to distribute, you know, along those lines. And then finally, just given sort of the burden around misdemeanors, the cost, the fines and the fees and such, I'd be interested in any programming that would supplement this to address the inequities related to the fines and fees. And that might include waivers, waiver programs or something like that, as well as maybe if there's any diversion associated with this as well. Thank you. Any questions, clarification? Okay, thank you.
I'll let them digest that before we move on. Okay, good. All right, Councilmember Lee.
I appreciate what Councilmember Barksdale was asking. And I think that's very thoughtful, and I believe that this these things should be considered, not to belittle it, but I believe that however, you know, this is an issue that we need to address right now because, you know, the state legislature failed to act. We heard very eloquently from one of our speakers, you know, Mr. Porlock, who obviously have look into this, and we cannot, you know, just rest and depend on the legislature to do it. In the meantime, you know, we have a gap. Hopefully, the governor will come up with a, you know, affirmative solution, and then we'd be in a clear. However, we don't know that for sure. So we need to be responsible for our residents, for our citizens. And, you know, so this this will take time. This is something that would be a process, a social change process we're gonna go through. And many things we don't know. That's why I appreciate what Councilmember Barksdale mentioned. We need to be flexible. However, we need to have a baseline, which we have to protect what we know, and we don't know what we don't know, but we have to work on it. So I would definitely support having a way of, you know, addressing this issue. And second, I believe that I appreciate Deputy Mayor proposing this, have the staff to look at it, you know, for more than eight hours. If, however, the council agrees, you know, even today, we don't need to have another action for the staff to bring back. If we want to do something, we should be able to tell the staff, let's approve it, let's go do it, and whatever time it takes, you know, we're behind it. We do this most of the time, actually. We don't always vote on issue and give the staff direction, well, give you eight hours to look into it. We say, this is the council policy. The council makes a policy, we decide to do it, staff, please do it. And I hope that today we can do the same thing. The second point is, as we know, again, the speaker has said, and many of them has said, we need to make sure that this is effective. This is that works as part of the process. I appreciate that's brought up. And to make it work has to be significant enough of a consequence, the word uses consequence. So I will propose that if we have to make it work, we got to make it stick. So I will propose even looking at gross misdemeanor rather than, you know, misdemeanor. I don't know what it takes to do it. I have no clue, but at least we start with something.
Well, that's good feedback for the staff.
So this is my.
Thank you.
Sorry?
That's good feedback for the staff.
Yeah, so this is something we want to know.
Okay.
But I just want to be sure that, let's just know, be wishy-washy, just take time, come back, talk, talk, come back. I just wanted to say, if we agree to this, let's be sure, let's tell the public, we stand for this. Some but some people already have concern. It's about we doing something. I'm really glad that we're doing something today. Now, many of our neighboring cities already doing it. They already.
Hey, Councilmember Lee, I think we understand your point.
Okay.
That you're agreeable to moving it forward, asking for staff's recommendation, and you'd like them to consider it being a gross misdemeanor.
I would like to make sure the staff understand what I'm talking about.
I'm gonna cut you off here, and I'll let you follow through.
But if I have a chance, I want to have the staff to.
I'll let you follow up with with staff. Councilmember Stokes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree with the with the proposal, and I think eight hours or a little bit more and a day is is a good time. It's not a big delay at all. I'm not concerned about that. What I what I think that means is, and I appreciate the Deputy Mayor proposing it this way, is that I think we all agree that we need to deal with this and deal with it now, and if the state comes up with something else, we'll work on that. But there are nuances to it, and, you know, it's it's a it's something that is very, very if if everybody had a good solution for it, we'd probably be talking about it. So we're we're getting into something that's gonna be very, very helpful in this. And it's not just drugs that are problems out in this in the community and why people are have are have, you know, hurt people or have crimes and things like that, but that's another matter. The real thing we have to deal with, and we know that, is is public people using drugs in public and and having, you know, real adverse effects on the community, and we need to deal with that. I think we're you've put together a very good proposal on this. And, you know, we don't want to just get people and put them in jail. We want to, and I appreciate your put framing it in, this is not just getting people off the streets and so we don't see them. It's getting them off the streets and then helping them and helping the bigger picture because if we don't deal with the drug issues, then we're still gonna have these problems. And this is a good way to for us to start on this. So I appreciate that very much, and let's go forward and come back, you know, and and our residents need help, a lot of them do, and and we need to help make sure that they're not harming other people or themselves. So I I think this is a smart move, and staff will do a good job in preparing this for us, and next meeting, we can go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, for bringing this forward. I strongly support this. A lot of cities are are convening together. SCA has been convening cities to work on this issue in Pierce County. The county executive has been convening cities to work on this issue. This is a real issue. Drug abuse and addiction is an absolute public health crisis. We are losing two point four seven people to overdoses a day in King County. Two point two nine of those are fentanyl, fentanyl. So we have a real problem, and a lot of the folks are suffering but will not get help, and a lot of drug addiction drives a lot of crimes. So this public health crisis is also leading to a crime crisis. So I'm very supportive. What I would like to see come forward is a knowing, obviously, it's a knowing possession. That was what the Blake case was all about, making it be a gross misdemeanor. I would also like to see it be a crime to use drugs in public. Many cities already passed that portion of the law, and many cities are also going towards the knowing possession as a gross misdemeanor to be effective July first, when the when the Blake semi-fix goes away. I also wanted to mention that Kent has been a leader on this, the city of Kent. They have created an ordinance which they passed a couple weeks ago, creating an alternative deferred prosecution. I can't even read my own writing. The alternative of deferred prosecution program, and they're using the opioid settlement money to pay for and help fund drug treatment for the people who choose door number one, deferred prosecution, I'm gonna get treatment. But then people, some people won't pick door number one, in which case there has to be a criminal penalty and a consequence because we just, this is just such a crisis. We have to do something. We cannot allow public drug use and or drug possession to become legal in Bellevue should the legislature fail to act. So I'm a hundred percent in. Thank you.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. You know, I too support this request to do the research and come back with the options to understand what's going on. I too understand that SCA has convened cities together. Cities have already, some have already acted. So it's good for us to understand what the other cities are doing and why, and understand the nuances so that when the information comes back, we can make that thoughtful determination about how we actually look at the the policy that needs to be adopted, as well as the support that some of my colleagues have already brought up. I guess for me, the part I'm trying to understand is, in order for us to get something passed before July one, you know, I know that we've got Memorial Weekend, we've got, we don't have a meeting on the fifteenth. So when do we expect this to come back so that we'll actually be able to have time to digest and understand before we vote?
Oh, well, excuse me, we'll try to get back to you, obviously, as quickly as we can. But as you point out, there is no meeting on the fifteenth. So depending on the scope of the information we need to pull together, we might be able to come back in a study session on the twenty second, but we'd want to make sure we understand the full scope of the information. If we can't get all information, we could still come back with some on the twenty second. But yes, this will, this is will be a general ordinance with a thirty day effective date, so it's it won't take effect for thirty days. So.
Oh, so so it so from the time that we pass it on the dais, there's thirty days before it actually goes into effect?
Yes, because it's a general ordinance that people could file a referendum on if they chose to do so.
Okay, so that's even more critical that we actually have something in front of us for that May twenty second meeting because we don't have one on the fifteenth. That's what I wanted to understand because it wasn't as clear here about the the timeline and and how much time we have. So, okay. The sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just say that I I he I was on a call with a bunch of mayors from the region, and everybody agreed that we need to be consistent. You can't have every city having a different interpretation of this. So hopefully, in your research, you can look at what other cities are doing, and we can come up with something that works for everybody. I like Auburn's recommendation that there be the ability to vacate a criminal record following treatment. I and I, you know, just personally would like you to look at, you know, I I don't think the treatment should be an option. Where you get the treatment is what should be the option. And so having the facilities needed to provide same-day services for people, and if they're in jail, that making sure they get the services in jail that they have, and that the time that they are in treatment is long enough so that they actually can receive appropriate treatment for what they need. So looking at time duration and what, you know, what is our city? If we have, if we put in this law, then what is our city's responsibility to providing the services for the people?
One of the things we will be prepared to come back and talk about is what we currently do for diversion. So even though we're not charging simple possession right now, we do charge for crimes like shoplifting or other crimes where it's obvious that drug use is is an issue. And so we do already have processes in place where we do divert people into treatment and would certainly plan on coming back when we come back to you and talk about what we currently have in place.
And I'd love to see the the data on that, like, are we successful with those programs?
Yes, I have already reached out to our probation department to see if we can pull data.
Okay, thank you very much. And so are we ready to take a vote?
I believe so.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay. Now we're on to the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, we have a public hearing, and then after this, we will take a break after the public hearing. Diane Carlson, Assistant.
Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you please introduce this?
And Councilmembers. We do have a public hearing tonight on April seventeenth. Staff held a study session for council's consideration of an interim official control to temporarily increase the residential floor area or FAR in downtown as part of the next right work for housing. And tonight, staff will give a brief presentation and overview, and then we'll turn it back to council to open the public hearing. Following the public hearing, staff is seeking action on the ordinance. So at the table, we have Liz Stead, Land Use Director, and Matthew Menard, Senior Planner. Both are with Development Services. Liz, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and all. We are back again, so and you're gonna get sick of me tonight, so I should give you a warning. I'm I'm at the table three times, so just, you know, get get ready. So big night, lots of activities. So we did a council direction, planned come back this evening. As the Deputy City Manager mentioned, we were here on April seventeenth last, speaking about this issue, and the council directed that they really wanted us to move quickly and come back. So we have come back this evening to speak again about the residential FAR increase and hold the public hearing. So the direction that council consideration tonight is to hold the public hearing and then potentially move to adopt the ordinance as drafted. then potentially move to adopt the ordinance as drafted. We have also provided some potential other options for council at the request from our last meeting and Matthew will be going through those as we move forward in our presentation. The, tonight for our agenda, we'll go through the background and we will go through a little bit quickly, but we want to make sure that everybody's here, that's here for the public hearing also has the same information that I know you've seen previously. So, we will go through that. We will also talk about the details for this FAR increase for the IOC. We'll talk about the direction that we received the last study session and bring you back some information that you had requested at that time. And lastly, we'll give you the staff recommendation and input and then we'll go through the process. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Matthew, who will run through the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. So, uh, we, as Liz mentioned, we have seen these previously at the study session. I mean, it was two weeks ago, so I will run through these relatively quickly, but for the benefit of the public, I will still go through these slides. So, this is part of the next right work. Um, the real goal of next right work is to increase both the production of market rate and affordable housing throughout the city. Uh, this council did initiate three actions in July of 2022, that being the micro-apartments LUCA, uh, which you did see, uh, a couple of weeks ago with your study session, a fee reduction for affordable housing, which will be coming later in the spring or early summer. Uh, and this IOC, which is a FAR increase for residential, uh, there is a phase two associated with this IOC as well, which will be a permanent land use code amendment. There were two additional actions that were initiated in January, that being middle housing and some permit, permit streamlining for residential projects. For phase one, so the interim official control, the geographic scope is limited to downtown. Uh, the goal of this is to quickly respond to application-ready projects and to test this FAR increase, uh, to make sure as we move into the permanent LUCA with phase two, that we are hitting the right numbers and, uh, meeting our intent. The objectives of this IOC are to increase residential development downtown. With that increase, we do want to increase the affordable housing production. As you've heard already tonight, affordable housing is crucial for the city at this juncture. And we do want to allow some application-ready projects downtown to move forward. Uh, there are three tools proposed to do this. Uh, higher FAR for residential projects in exchange for affordable housing. Uh, we'll discuss the details of that shortly. Development flexibility for projects with affordable housing and flexibility on FAR utilization within a downtown perimeter. I do want to stress again that that flexibility is not an FAR transfer program and it will have to be utilized on a single site. Uh, so here we have the timeline for both phase one and phase two. Uh, this is the last step of phase one if you do take action tonight as we are recommending, uh, public hearing and action. We will then move into phase two, which will, uh, be a larger exploration of incurring residential in the mixed-use districts. It will be permanent regulations. Uh, we are looking at starting that shortly, uh, but it does rely on the environmental impact statement for the comp plan update, uh, as the environmental impact statement for phase two as well. Uh, and we're shooting for adoption of that in early 2024. Uh, so our recommendation for this IOC is to increase the exempt FAR allowed for downtown districts. Currently, one FAR is allowed to be exempt if the ratio of affordable housing to market rate housing provided is one to 2.5. Uh, we are encouraging that to be increased to 50% of the base FAR in any district. Uh, this will give a range for any district downtown of 1.35 to 4.5. We're also proposing increased development flexibility specifically within the perimeter overlay, uh, allowing for increased heights if you meet a threshold of affordable housing that exempt square footage provided, a reduction in the step back and an increase in lot coverage. I will note that the lot coverage increase currently does already exist in our downtown code. We are also proposing some downtown-wide flexibility on parking, um, eliminating the minimum parking requirement for affordable housing units. Uh, as I mentioned, we're also proposing a perimeter overlay FAR flexibility. Uh, we have heard from several development entities that with the form standards in our perimeter overlay districts, they're not able to reach that FAR, which is hampering the development of housing in those areas. So, we are proposing allowing them to move some of that unused FAR outside of the perimeter overlay if they do have a project that transcends those districts. Uh, we went out for stakeholder input on this. Um, the big item for stakeholder input, the big discussion item was that ratio. Uh, I'll remind you, the current ratio is for every one square foot of affordable housing, you're allowed 2.5 square feet of market rate housing. Uh, we heard from the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition, uh, that their preferred market rate to affordable housing ratio is three to one or 25% affordable. Uh, we are proposing four to one and we did hear from the Chamber of Commerce Plush Group that their preferred, uh, number was six to one. Uh, we do think our number sort of shoots the middle and allows us to both encourage residential development, so it's enough of an incentive for, uh, entities to take up this incentive, which we're not seeing currently downtown, um, but also provides us that affordable housing that we desperately need. Uh, so again, we did bring this for a study session on April 17th. Uh, out of that study session, we heard several points of direction from you, uh, that we have gone back and will be bringing back to you today. Uh, those items are doing some additional outreach to neighbors, analyzing a little bit more of the urban design impacts of the building height and step back reductions, um, discussing where this, uh, IOC may or may not be applicable or should or should not be applicable and how we measure success with this IOC. In regards to the neighbor outreach, uh, we did provide details of the IOC, including the agenda memo that was provided to you at the study session, to the Downtown Residents' Association, the Viewcrest Owners' Association, the Old Bellevue Merchants' Association with a request for input. Uh, we do have input that you have been provided from Viewcrest Owners' Association. Uh, they have requests that the step back in A1 be eliminated. Additionally, there was a request to remove the IOC from both, uh, from A1, B1, and B2. Uh, I have not specifically heard from the Old Bellevue Merchants' Association. Uh, we have had input from, uh, downtown developer in Old Bellevue, uh, requesting that the building heights actually be increased to 150 feet, uh, to allow concrete construction types. Uh, we do have, uh, one piece of input for the, from a downtown residence, but not specifically from the Residents' Association, uh, requesting that the step back, uh, reduction in, uh, Old Bellevue be eliminated on, uh, Main Street, citing concerns with shadowing. We also met with the Bellevue Downtown Association to give them an update on, uh, this project and discuss the study session a little bit deeper. They have also provided you with input that has been, uh, given to you today. Um, so we have looked at the impacts of the height increase and the step back reduction. Uh, we do believe the impacts will be minimal. Uh, it's a relatively minimal height increase, especially with taller buildings, you know, the wedding cake that we talked about being in the backdrop. Uh, we do require variation in facade, so you're not going to get large, flat facades anywhere in downtown. Uh, we do require street level amenities as well through the land use code, specifically in Old Bellevue on Main Street. As it is part of the Grand Connection, we require additional street level amenities. Um, this picture that I've provided for you in the presentation here can show some of those amenities. It also shows that variation in facade. Our current regulations also do allow a reduction in the step back if certain conditions have been met. Uh, and again, we did contact the neighbors for input. Uh, Viewcrest has requested that the adjacent, uh, step back reduction to Viewcrest, uh, be taken out of the IOC. Um, so, we have been asked to provide you with some language that has been provided in your council packet. Uh, option one is to remove the step back reduction in perimeter overlay A1 only. Option two would be to remove that in A1 and, uh, Main Street through Old Bellevue. Additionally, we were asked to, uh, provide some additional language to remove A1 and, uh, the downtown Old Bellevue District in their entirety from the IOC. That would mean that none of the provisions of the IOC, including the FAR transfer and the, uh, exemption increase would apply to these areas. Those areas are shown in red on the map that, on the slide. And finally, how do we measure success? Uh, currently, our downtown program is not well utilized. What we've seen is developers that were going to provide affordable housing anyway have used the program, otherwise it's not been taken up. So, an increase in utilization of this program, of this exemption, would be a success for us. Uh, we are really trying to set a foundation for phase two as well. Um, so as we move through the process, talking to developers, seeing what's worked, what's not worked with them, as they, uh, begin looking at projects downtown will help inform us for phase two and that's really where we're going to find a lot of success with this and make sure that phase two, which is those permanent regulations, are a success. And in regards to the process, this was launched on December 12th of last year. We did have that study session two weeks ago and we're here tonight, uh, requesting a public hearing and, uh, some action on this IOC. And with that, Mayor, I will turn it back to you. Um, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we're going to move on, um, to open the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are 10 speakers and before I start calling names, I will note that this public hearing was published in the permit bulletin as well as a paper of general circulation. Um, and, um, pursuant to that notice, the council did receive five written comments, which are included in your desk packet for this evening. And with that, I'll call our first speaker, which is Cindy Ju, who is joining us, I believe, virtually. Ms. Ju, can you hear me?
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Your time begins now.
Go ahead, Cindy Ju.
Ms. Ju?
Apologies, I think those online are unable to hear the council.
Yeah, are you, can you hear us? Ms. Ju? Okay, I'm going to circle back to her. Uh, the next speaker is Matt Jack. Mr. Jack, can you hear us?
I wonder if we have a technical glitch.
Mr. Jack, can you hear us? Okay, I am going to go to the first in-person speaker, which is Jodi Alberts.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. Jodi Alberts, uh, VP of Government Affairs for the Bellevue Chamber. Um, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the FAR LUCA this evening. Um, we at the Bellevue Chamber certainly appreciate the council and staff's diligence in addressing the affordable housing need in Bellevue and in working to determine how best to effectively provide that need through incentivizing private sector development. The Plush Committee at the Chamber appreciate the city's willingness in including us in the IOC stakeholder process and we certainly believe that this process is much better informed as a result. And we also appreciate the fact that they also incorporated some of that feedback into today's proposal. And while we hope the council will move forward with the IOC as outlined in today's materials, we do strongly urge the consideration, consideration of two items in phase two. One, that the affordable housing to market ratio of four to one be increased on the market rate side. And two, that the connected floor plate departures be applied to structure, structures of up to 95 feet. We believe that those two items will be critically important, uh, for achieving our affordable housing goals across the board, um, from industry's perspective, um, and being able to achieve, uh, those numbers and truly making it pencil for them. And so, there, the private sector will truly have a, a better foundation of which to, to build, um, our affordable housing supply. And to ensure this is the case, we also strongly encourage staff to include plush when evaluating phase one of the IOC, um, as they did prior, uh, to drafting, uh, the interim official control. Um, so determining whether industry can operate under these policies will again be paramount to achieving our collective goals. So, thank you for the opportunity to comment and we look forward to continuing our work together on this issue.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm going to try Cindy Ju again. Ms. Ju, can you hear us? Okay, I'm going to move on to our next in-person speaker and that's Rebecca Vanderburg.
Hello. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, to thank you for your thoughtful consideration of each and every existing and proposed residential neighborhood within Bellevue and your regard for our quality of life in relation to the whole of the city of Bellevue. I think it's important to think carefully about how each new regulation affects not only the new and incoming, but the existing constituency. Um, one of my main concerns is, um, I live in Viewcrest, um, and I have worked in Bellevue for over 30 years. Um, I'm concerned about the buffer between an established neighborhood and high-density housing and having to mitigate any problems with that in the future, especially on 100th Avenue Northeast. I'm concerned about that particular street becoming a back alley of the city of Bellevue and I don't want that to happen. I don't think enough has been discussed regarding the traffic congestion, the parking, and the short-term pullover stops of additional vehicles. And that all happens with, uh, an increase in density. Uh, my second concern would be, uh, for the community of Viewcrest impacted in some of the most simplistic ways as far as shadowing and the creation of shade zones from buildings. Um, putting aside those privacy violations because our own yards are now on display from high-rise windows. But, in regards to low-income housing with no parking, I'm also concerned about parking issues, which are already a problem in our neighborhood. Um, and to me, low-income housing should be the first place that gets parking either included. It seems odd that we're requesting that working poor receive, um, an option of purchasing or renting parking at even a discount. So, if they have no eternal, alternative to find someplace to park their cars within neighborhoods surrounding high density, right now, if you leave your car outside, even in our Viewcrest neighborhood, it's likely to be broken into or at least have the catalytic converter, converter stolen. There is no safe place on the streets to park your car, even now. And if we're going to care for low-income people, I think we have to meet their needs and transportation is a basic need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, our next speaker is Chad Vaculon.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Chad Vaculon with the Housing Development Consortium and the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition. Um, we appreciate the intent of the phase one IOC to increase production, um, and are grateful to both the council and city staff for the opportunity to be engaged in this process. And I do especially want to shout out the city staff who, um, has been open, um, to coming to the affordable housing community to, to solicit feedback. So, thank you, thank you for that. Um, our top priority as a coalition is a policy that results in more homes being built, both affordable and market rate. And the phase one IOC sets the foundation for what will become the permanent LUCA in phase two. And we strongly, as a coalition, urge the city of Bellevue to enact a framework for mandatory inclusionary zoning in downtown and mixed-use zones in the phase two LUCA with a flexible fee and lieu option. Uh, we believe that mandatory inclusionary zoning is more likely to result in meaningful amounts of affordable housing than incentive zoning. And we've seen through our neighbors in Redmond's experience, um, that shows that there can be, uh, mandatory inclusionary zoning policy that can be implemented while continuing to have, uh, healthy real estate development activity. The phase one IOC proposal has some really great elements and we believe that there's a couple of parts that need some additional refinement to work better for affordable housing. And the revised ratio of market rate housing to affordable housing is a substantial reduction from the current ratio. And we caution against excessively reducing the affordable housing ratio for incentive zoning in the absence of rigorous and current analysis and think that a three-to-one ratio of a market rate to affordable housing is a better incremental step for the phase one IOC. And we support the additional development standard flexibility that comes, um, with using the affordable housing FAR exemption, but I will. But I will note that where the existing base FAR is not a significant limit on development potential, increasing the development standard flexibility also increases the amount of effective FAR. We believe that a fair incentive-based system would count all square footage that is attributable to that change, and that should be factored into the affordable housing ratio. And finally, we strongly support the continued ability to stack the program with MFTE to reach deeper affordability levels. And we urge the city of Bellevue to expand MFTE program to include affordable homeownership as well and to explore that into the future. And with that, I will thank you for the opportunity to comment and for your thoughtful engagement in this issue. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Third time is a charm. We're going to ask for Ms. Cindy Jew, who I believe can hear us now. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, your time begins now.
Appreciate it. Thank you, council members and city staff. My name is Cindy Jew, and I'm with Heinz. We're the developers of the Main Street Place Mixed Use Project in downtown Bellevue. I wanted to first thank the city council and development services staff for recognizing the importance of adopting the IOC as quickly as possible to address the severe housing shortage that we are facing in Bellevue. At the last council meeting on April 17th, the council asked what the best measure of success would be for the IOC, and it was determined that actual utilization of the FAR exemption would be the best measure to determine its effectiveness. From our perspective, the FAR exemption provided within the IOC does indeed create a strong incentive for developers to add more housing, including more additional affordable units in projects such as ours that are currently in planning. Particularly for Main Street Place, this means being able to provide an additional two-stories of housing on our residential buildings, a meaningful increase to the number of units offered. Furthermore, we're building a true transit-oriented housing development, steps from Sound Transit's future East Main Light Rail Station, which encourages the use of public transit and could help alleviate on-road vehicle congestion. The IOC aligns with and supports this vision of creating a true live-work-play community. We strongly believe in the approach that the city is taking and believe that it will translate into many more desperately needed units of housing in the downtown area. We advocate in support of the swift adoption of the IOC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, the next speaker on our list is Matt Jack. Mr. Jack, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Charmaine. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. Your time begins now.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, council members. I'm commenting on behalf of the Bellevue Downtown Association to express our support for the city staff's proposed Phase One implementation of the interim official control that you will be discussing this evening. As Matthew had noted earlier in his presentation, the BDA convened a group of stakeholders last week to review the IOC and cover the questions that council posed at its previous meeting on the topic. This group was comprised of subject matter experts and property owners who had developed affordable housing with using the FAR exemption and recently some condominiums in downtown. So, we had an exceptional group to cover this topic. Based on their review, they noted that the staff's recommendation was a good testing ground and that they wanted to emphasize that this is a six-month program to see if it hits the mark and that we can learn a lot from it. Based on their additional review of it, they don't see any major trade-offs or impacts from doing this approach, and so there is support to move forward with the IOC. With that said, we do want to emphasize the need to study everything under the sun following the IOC in preparation of Phase Two. So, let's reevaluate the ratio, let's take a look at all the different amenities, bonuses, and elements out there to make sure that we are encouraging residential development wherever we can. So, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you for convening on this topic, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, the next speaker is Jesse Simpson, and I do not see you connected by name online. If you are, could you please use the raise hand function? Okay, moving on. Jonathan Kegel.
Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members. Last time I was here speaking in front of the council, it was about the new land use code that came out, can you believe it, six years ago, coming out of the downtown livability project. This was a huge effort. It took a long time, maybe too long, you know that customer remarks, as well as anybody. But there was a lot of work to make sure that the form, the functionality, the, you know, the scale, the amenities, the FAR, the height were all well-balanced in the different zones of downtown. The previous code, the wedding cake code, lasted decades, and the goal was to keep it, this one, you know, designed to be flexible enough to last for decades as well. But now there's a proposal before the council that makes significant changes. Although the goal to increase the stock of affordable housing is an important and noble goal, this specific proposal seems to have some really significant side effects that may not be obvious, especially by its title. It's not just FAR. It's not just flexibility. There are significant changes to the height, the form, and the lot coverage that directly impacts neighboring communities, including my own. I serve as Vice President of the Viewcrest Community Association, and there is a big impact being directly to the west of downtown. We live with that, we embrace it, but these changes have a very negative impact, especially due to shadows and privacy. Already, we have proposals with shadow studies that are, these are things in the midst of permitting that impact multiple houses in Viewcrest. Increasing the size of house, the height of housing from 75 feet to 100 feet directly across 100th from single-story homes has a huge impact on privacy and the shadows, especially because we're west, it's in the wintertime. You know, also, there was a lot of work that was done on the transition from high-density high-rises in downtown to the single-story Viewcrest that by raising the wedding cake once again causes a chasm. So, I would like to have council and staff maybe take a little bit more time and resources to craft the code to understand this broader impact. We want shadow studies, form studies, simulated views along 100th, and just to have you visit Viewcrest. There are other ways to incent affordable housing, but right now, even though the title is that this is a temporary change, the impact is permanent. So please take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker on the pre-registered list is Carl Vanderhook. Mr. Vanderhook, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect, your time begins now.
Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members and staff, my name is Carl Vanderhook, speaking on behalf of Vanderhook Corporation, who's operated businesses for four generations and owned property in Old Bellevue for 85 years. We have been working for over a year and a half on a potential residential development project in Old Bellevue. Earlier this year, we submitted for AER and are less than two months away from submitting for building permits. We are application-ready. There are only two months until the International Building Code changes on June 30th, 2023. The IVC changes create larger units across the board due to the 88-dimensional clearance requirements increasing by six inches around appliances and fixtures. This creates larger units, and therefore, less units overall can be achieved in downtown Bellevue. The IVC change also means increased construction costs for all projects by the way of thicker concrete requirements, higher energy code, et cetera. The project that we have designed is not achieving the base FAR. We're at 4.1, where 4.5 is allowed base, nor is it achieving the base height allowed of 99 feet. We're straining it to 75 feet. This is all because of the definition of high-rise. In the International Building Code, a high-rise is anything above 75 feet, which creates additional fire code requirements and added costs. In an effort to incentivize housing and affordable housing, that is necessary to encourage residential development instead of office. And to help achieve the city's growth required under the Growth Management Act, the perimeter overlay height should be lifted to 150 feet in order to make concrete high-rise construction viable and offset the housing supply impacts of the impending IVC change and economic headwinds. Without increased height, affordable housing incentives as well as amenity incentives are unlikely to be achieved. I ask, is it equitable to provide incentives for affordable housing in some neighborhoods and not others? Why exclude Old Bellevue from the only remaining incentive available to promote affordable housing? In closing, option one from Exhibit A in your packet is the option we would prefer if we were forced to pick today. However, even better would be to maintain the neighborhood look and feel in the current code required 15-foot step back on Main Street. Keep that. As envisioned in option two, however, increase the heights in B1 to 150 feet.
Mr. Vanderhook? Mr. Vanderhook, apologies, your time has expired. That does bring us to the end of our pre-registered list. If there's anyone joining us this evening in council chambers or online who would like to speak specifically about this public hearing, please raise your hand. Go ahead, have her, and then Ms. Dean. If you could state your name for the record when you said, thank you.
Hello, my name is Cole Myers, and I'm trying to understand exactly how this is going to affect our neighborhoods. At first, I was looking at the .5 FAR as something that was going to be like a huge amount of additional affordable housing, though after looking at it more, I think actually it means that there's going to be .1 FAR of affordable housing and .4 FAR of market-rate housing. So, given that, it sounds like for areas like the A1 overlay, you'll have an increase in height from 55 to 80 feet, almost 50% increase, and then the amount of affordable housing in that is going to be maybe .1 on top of an existing, I think it's 3.5, sorry, 3.15 base FAR, which means that the percentage of affordable housing in that area is only going to be about 3% of the building, which doesn't seem like very much when you're allowing the building to be almost 50% taller. I think we should be able to either reduce the amount of additional height that's being offered or expect, you know, some additional affordable housing to be included. And my apologies in advance if I'm misunderstanding something about how this is anticipated to affect the actual construction in the area. I do believe that even though this is temporary, this is a permanent thing that, you know, will be very visible, very part of our community. And I don't necessarily disagree with an 80-foot building, but I think we should make sure that we're getting the amount of affordable housing that we're hoping to out of an exchange like that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
Good evening, council. I hadn't intended to speak during the public hearing since it was mostly about the downtown and downtown overlay, but as I was listening to my friends from Viewcrest here talk, I wanted to support what they were saying, and then this lovely lady just really put it into perspective, which is, I feel like right now, there's not a very good, I guess, return on investment, if you will say, with the increase in floor area ratio for affordable housing. You know, we talk about with the Growth Management Act and the UGAs, the urban growth areas and not wanting sprawl outside of that. Well, in downtown, there wasn't supposed to be downtown sprawl. There's hard lines that where downtown stops and then the residential neighborhoods begin. And this is starting to feel like downtown sprawl to the neighborhoods. And even though this would be across the street from Viewcrest, I was listening to what Mr. Kegel and this other lady, whose name I forgot, was saying and thinking, it all makes sense. And the truth of the matter is, is that when we go into Phase Two and we start looking at other areas, whatever happens to them at Viewcrest could happen in these other areas, such as Newport Hills. And even though we wouldn't end up with maybe like a 100-foot building at the shopping center, we would end up with a much taller building under something like this. And I do know that the people living in the Newport Hills townhomes directly behind the shopping center are very concerned about the exact same things that Mr. Kegel and his neighbors brought up, the shadows and the lack of privacy, the parking's already an issue in Newport Hills with between all of our, and we have a lot of affordable housing already in Newport Hills. But if you're not doing parking, then it's back out into the neighborhoods. And actually, 58th Street, when you turn onto it, between the S-Mart and the church's parking lot is very dangerous right now because people, there's not enough parking for the Newporter and all those other places. So, I would just really ask that you take that into consideration because I really, I want to support my fellow neighborhoods, knowing that what happens to them can happen to my neighborhood, it can happen to any neighborhood right now. So, I stand with you. Thank you.
Thank you. One more call for hands, anyone who would like to speak to the public hearing. I do not see any more hands, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much, Charmaine. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so, I'm going to start because I'm going to ask that you entertain a different option, and I am going to speak to two areas that we have been given a map for, and if we can put the map on the screen, that would help me show what areas I'm talking about. Yep. So it's the downtown Old Bellevue Land Use District and the perimeter overlay District A1. And I'm interested in taking those out, removing those from the IOC because, I mean, our public testimony said it very well, Mr. Kegel, when we talk about how many years we spent trying to come up with the right solution for those sensitive areas that are right next to Single Family and then Old Bellevue, which has a very distinct character, is a very narrow street, I think that they are going to be more negatively impacted by this IOC and less positively impacted than the other areas. I'm not asking for anything other than just to leave them where they are today with the ability to develop as they have today and remove them from the proposed IOC, which I'm fine with in the rest of the area. So, I wonder if Councilmember Stokes could make a motion for me, and then we could discuss the merits of that.
Yeah, move to adopt Ordinance 6736, amended to removing the downtown Old Bellevue Land Use District and Perimeter Overlay Districts A1 from the IOC.
So, I'll, thank you, I'll open it up for discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Go ahead, council, well, let's start with council members on, we'll just go down the line.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you, and I appreciate getting all the comments and the additional outreach that the staff did on this IOC. I absolutely agree with the A1 and the fact that we had already spent five years on the downtown livability and come up with the modified plan that took care of that area, so I agree. and come up with the modified plan that took care of that area. So, I agree with that one. I would like to understand just a little bit more because we did hear from Mr. Vanderhook about the Old Main area and just understanding a bit more. So, maybe, since Mayor, this is your neighborhood, just being able to a little bit understand that part of it, just because we-
It's actually behind me.
Oh, okay. Because we did hear from the community about the fact that, you know, in that neighborhood, perhaps it's not the same discussion of what we're trying to do than the A1 area. So, I'd just like to understand a bit more about that one.
I can speak a little bit. Certainly, if the Old Bellevue District is in, it would include both portions of perimeter overlay B1 and also perimeter overlay A2. So, it would be a relatively large portion that would be excluded from this IOC. In that circumstance, all of the, you know, all of the existing development potential would remain the same and it just would not be able to participate in this additional density in response or in relationship to the affordable housing. So, none of the height increases would apply, nor the step-back decrease. But there are, I believe that the project that Mr. Vanderhook referred to is in design review at this point in time. And at this point, design anticipate taking advantage of this FAR increase.
And have we heard from any others in that area when you did the outreach? I just wanted to understand because I believe that that was the only comment that we heard. So, I just wanted to understand a bit more. Thank you.
We did have one additional email comment. I'm not sure, they identified themselves as a downtown resident. I'm not sure where downtown, but they did have concerns about the reduction in step-back and building heights increasing shadowing on Main Street as well.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to hearing from my colleagues as well.
And I think Mr. Vanderhook was actually asking for increased height even beyond the IOC, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, Councilmember Robertson.
I just wanted to understand as I'm following the amendments. Is the amendment that I just seconded, Option Two in the packet, okay? I thought it was. And I think this is, and you said, no, that's wrong, right?
No. So, Option Two in the packet is going to be simply targeted to the step-back. And it would be in A1 District and only along Main Street in Old Bellevue. This motion that has been made would remove the A1 District entirely as well as all of the downtown Old Bellevue District from the IOC, which are going to be those two areas that are highlighted in red. So, none of the provisions of the IOC would apply in either of those areas.
Okay. So, are there any, I know Vanderhook Corporation has one that's already in design review in the area. Are there any pending projects in those two areas that you are aware of?
No.
Okay. So, I wouldn't mind thinking about this for a few minutes while I listen to my colleagues. But in general, I think that this, having something less in these districts is fair. And the reason I think it's fair is that the streets, this is all west of Bellevue Way. And the streets there, Old Main and One Hundredth, are really narrow. And so, when you look at how much space you have between buildings, whether, whichever kinds of buildings, high-rise to high-rise, high-rise to single-family, the width of the street matters because the width of the street creates more of a setback from whatever's next to it. And One Hundredth is narrow. Main Street is narrow. And so, and I thought I, I'll just stop there. So, for me, we need to be really thoughtful about what we're doing there. I definitely have a lot of sympathy for people who live in housing where they have a backyard garden and there is shade on their garden. I mean, that is a terrible situation. Someone who loves to garden, having high-rises, you know, shade people's personal backyard spaces is a difficult thing and it's not something I really want to start doing. On the other hand, we really need housing. We really need housing, we really need affordable housing. So, how that's perfectly balanced, I'm not a hundred percent sure. And maybe I need a little bit more of an explanation from staff on the proposed ordinance, Option One, Option Two, and this option. But I'd like to first hear from my colleagues before I decide how I'm going to vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, this is a really difficult one with all the different actions that could affect one or the other. And we're at a time where changes have happened drastically downtown. We understand that. And we're having more need for housing, not for affordable housing and need for housing. We have a, you know, we're at almost a hundred and fifty thousand people. This whole thing was planned for forty thousand people. And that makes a lot of difference. But again, it's that where do you hit the sweet spot in meeting the different needs on this? And one of the things that I think is really important, and personally, and I think a lot of us share this, is there is something special about the downtown Old Bellevue. And large buildings, tall buildings in that area would kind of wipe that out in a sense. So, it's a matter of what is more important to us and how do we balance that in terms of looking at the whole city? And I do think that there is a lot of opportunities for more affordable housing in many parts of the city. Now, every neighborhood is going to, at some point, have some pressure on it to accept more housing. And we've done that a lot. And with On Woodridge, there's a lot of areas all around there. People don't really think about that, but there are quite a number and there are other options that could be moved. We're going to have to build more housing. We can't just keep sprawling out because we don't have the, you know, the boundaries are there. But it gets back to the values and what makes, one of the things that makes Bellevue Bellevue, at least in my opinion, and I think a lot of people share this, is Old Bellevue. And I think that's, Old Bellevue actually is poised to be something even better than it is now. And there are changes coming down along Maiden Bay. And that's going to be affected by, at some point, about high-rises and the shadows and all those things. So, it's a balance. And the other one up in up in the community up at the top here, along that area, again, is that is that question of how close do we get housing with higher buildings? And we have higher buildings in a lot of places. So, it's not as if we're, you know, this is a rule. But I think, again, that's the concern is how much is too much on that? And how do we balance it? And there are some other technical issues of how we could actually increase higher, you know, more housing that we maybe haven't touched on. But I think that's what we're all thinking about and people in the community, and not people just who live here, but who are there. And with the downtown park and all the things going on there, all of a sudden, having it in a canyon is kind of scary. I think that's the feeling people have. And it seems like we're not quite there in terms of how do we get a rational balance of these things? And we have this tremendous pressure to get the housing because more people want to move here and we need affordable housing. And so, this is a tough one. It seemed like when we were talking about this earlier, it was pretty simple. But I think that we need to really look at this. And again, I don't think anybody wants to take five years to try to figure this out. But we need to get on this quickly and look at this and see what balances we can come up with a little more. I don't think we're quite there yet.
So, how long does the IOC last?
Six months.
And we can reassess after that time and put this back in if we decided to do that. Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation this evening. Great comments by my colleagues. I'm in favor of this amendment by the mayor via Councilmember Stokes. And his comments are right in terms of, you know, Old Bellevue, Main is something worth protecting. It's a jewel of the city, a reason a lot of people come in, and that's a unique area. We don't want to see that damaged in any way. Also, really appreciate the comments tonight by residents of the Viewcrest neighborhood. Agree with Councilmember Robertson that, you know, those privacy and shade concerns are real concerns. So, anything we can do to lessen that? I think whenever, you do have a neighborhood so close to downtown, you can expect some. But anything that we can do to reduce some of it or the impact of some of it is worthy of our best efforts to do that. So, like Councilmember Robertson, I'd like a little bit more information now on Option One versus Option Two, just to make sure I understand that correctly, if we can revisit that quickly. And there might be other colleagues who'd like to make sure they understand exactly which option we're selecting here and what's best for this IOC. But again, I'm in favor of the amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Lee. I would like to have more information on your additional stakeholder outreach. The last time we met, you know, I was very interested in that. And I believe that you said you could do it. And I'm glad, I think you have been doing that. So, it's good. But I haven't heard back from what you have found out. And this may be the results of what you find out. But I want to hear what it is and what it isn't. So, I'm not quite ready for a decision because I haven't heard from you yet. And so, if you want my opinion, you know, I would say that I appreciate the intent and passion about having more housing, absolutely, more affordable housing of all kinds. And, but we need to, however, consider special situation. That's why we want you to do a stakeholder, you know, outreach so that we know what are the interests and concerns and special need of each community. And I believe that what we do, yes, number one, go want to have more housing. But two, more, just as important, if not more, is we don't want to disrupt, destroy the character, the existing people who live there. You know, people who live there, and there are more of them, and they've been living long. We've heard before, we want to take care of people who are living here, who have spent all their life here, who made the city what it is. And I don't think that, you know, we need to slight those and belittle those. We need to consider them. Doesn't mean that it's paramount, no, but have behalf to hear from them. And I think that's the stakeholder input. So, based on that, I believe that the option that you propose seems to be, without again hearing your input, I think that makes sense because we've heard the testimony of the people who live in the Viewcrest area. And they are there, they're the neighborhood, they've been there for the last, you know, sixty, seventy years. Nothing wrong with that. And that they want to maintain that. And the reason that they brought up that they have concerns makes sense, right? Because disrupts whatever they are used to, what they are accustomed to. It makes sense. And I think that applies to Old Main as well. So, I agree. Because Old Main is very unique, very different character. We have the, you know, we go to the restaurant, I go there every day during the week. Old Main is, you know, is just going crazy, you know, which is a good thing because they bring back economy, bring back people, bring back energy. That's what Bellevue is about. So, I, without hearing from you, without making prejudgment, I would support what you show, you show, you know, of the two areas in red being provided, you know, well, to be removed in the set-back and out and overlay and all that stuff. But I do want to still hear from you whether it matches what we are thinking about and so that I can be sure that, you know, I'm listening to people, I hear what they have to say. Thank you.
Let's let Councilmember Barxdale comment and then we will clarify the motion if we need to. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the comments, public comments, and the rest of the council. So, I guess a couple of questions. What would be the impact of removing the set-back in terms of the number of affordable units or units in general? And then, secondly, are these overlays specifically unique? Meaning, I guess I'm thinking about what's maybe preventing any other stakeholders from coming forward and requesting additional exemption, which I don't mean in terms of the proposal, but exemption from, of overlays? Or is it unique enough?
Sure. In regards to the number of units, I really can't give you a number. It would be pure speculation on my part. We do know that with the construction techniques and with the additional floor area, there will be some units lost if you do not allow them to drop that step-back. But we don't know that number of units. Obviously, we're seeing construction today with the step-back, so I can't give you a specific number. In regards to the uniqueness of each district, any member of the public, I think, could come in and request that any district be removed from this. That's sort of their prerogative to do so. You know, I think what we're hearing from council and from some of the neighbors is that these two areas have unique conditions and that's why they've been singled out. But nothing's stopping, you know, someone from, say, East Main from coming in and requesting that side of downtown be removed from the IOC as well.
Councilmember Barxdale may add one thing as well. So, if you look at perimeter overlay A2 and B, A2 in the north side, there's actually a long linear McCormick Park across the street from that perimeter overlay, which does change, I think, the situation a little bit. And then, if we're looking at the perimeter overlay A2 between downtown Old Bellevue and the A1 zoning district, that area really is where Bellevue Square Mall is and so on. It probably has a wider street. So, those are a couple of characteristics that maybe make these areas a little bit different than some of the others for your consideration.
Got it. Thank you.
So, are we okay with the IOC? Does anybody have any problems just with the IOC as the staff has proposed? I don't think so. I haven't heard that. So, the, what's been, the motion that's been made is to just approve the IOC but remove those two areas from it. So, that's what's on the table. So, let's go ahead and vote on that. And if we vote no, then we'll go back and we'll do another motion on the IOC as staff has proposed.
Just going to ask just a question for clarification. So, we do this, we could put those back in, right?
Well, we're going to review in six months.
Review. Yeah. Just want to know, we're still working on this.
So, the motion is to adopt Ordinance 6736, amended to remove downtown Old Bellevue Land Use District and perimeter overlay District A1 from the IOC as stated by Councilmember Stokes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So, that passes the exemption and the IOC. Thank you.
Madam Lee, can I ask a question?
Yes, if they're still here.
Well, you haven't answered my question. We had-
Again, more stakeholders' outreach information back.
Mr., Councilmember Lee, let me-
Does that affect anything else that we're talking about?
Let me ask something from you. We have six months to put this in place and to get more feedback from stakeholders. Is there specific feedback you would like them to see?
At the last meeting, I raised the question about getting more feedback and the staff agreed. And we've heard back since then. I'm very happy. Viewcrest position, I heard something from Old Main. And I'm just curious if there's any other information that can, you know, maybe improve on the recommendation we just gave you. That's all. If you say no, I'm happy. If it is yes, I'd like to hear what are those? And then, I can decide. Maybe I would propose to include it. Okay? And then, let's have a shot at it. If you don't know what you don't know, I'd like to know more. Thank you.
I don't think we've received any information that we haven't passed along to you. So, with our outreach from what you've heard tonight, when we did outreach, I sent these groups an email with the information and also provided them information on how to contact me with input or contact you with input. I think several of those groups have chosen to come directly to you. So, what you've heard tonight is that input that we're receiving. Any other input we received throughout this process, you've either been given an update on through these presentations and our materials or you've gotten directly or been passed through. So, some of your desk materials today was some additional input as well. But you haven't, we haven't heard anything that you haven't heard. We may have heard some more details, but we've passed it all along to you. And we've provided all of these groups that we've done outreach to with the information every step of the way of how to provide comments. done outreach to with the information every step of the way of how to provide comments to you, when the meetings are. Directly the day after we held the study session, I reached out to every commenter that made comment at the study session, and told them when the public hearing was going to be and when how they could make comments. So I don't think we have any more information than you have.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I've complimented you from doing it. As a result, we've been hearing a lot. And we heard today, some of all heard today at the Willcrest. And we heard from a couple of residents living in Newport Hills, because this is important, not just to downtown, but to other part of the city as well. This is all good information to have, so that we can make our choices and decisions right now, because one affect the other. So.
Thank you so much.
I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to take a break till 25 after recess. All right. We'll go ahead and start. So we have two study session items. And I am going to recuse myself from the first one, because my husband works for the King County Housing Authority, which is involved in one, and I'm a member of Holy Cross Church, which is involved in another one. So I'm going to hand the meeting over to the deputy mayor, and then I will come back when we're done with this. Okay? Thank you. And I'll let Diane, why don't you go ahead and introduce?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Our first study session item comes to us from ARCH, a regional coalition for housing. The ARCH executive board is recommending funding for seven projects as part of the 2022 Housing Trust Fund round. And staff are here tonight to provide highlights of the recommended projects for funding. Following the presentation, staff will request council direction to return with legislation approving the funding recommendations. So joining us today are Lindsay Masters, ARCH Executive Director, Elsa Kings, the ARCH Housing Trust Fund Manager, and Linda Abe, Affordable Housing Planning Manager from the Community Development Department. And with that, I will hand it over to Lindsay to kick off the presentation. Thank you.
I think Linda's going to kick us off.
Thank you for the introduction, Deputy Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor's not here now, but Deputy Mayor New in House and members of the council. I'd like to offer a few opening comments on behalf of the Community Development Department. The city of Bellevue and ARCH have partnered to create and preserve affordable housing in Bellevue and the east side for almost 30 years. The original inter local agreement in 1992 included Bellevue, King County, Kirkland, and Redmond, and has since expanded to include other east side cities. The Housing Trust Fund is an annual program and has contributed to a range of projects over the years in Bellevue and across the east side.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Actually, went back to, right. Okay. The city of Bellevue's continuing support for the ARCH Trust Fund is consistent with the affordable housing strategy, which was adopted in 2017. The Housing Trust Fund is an important affordable housing tool that we really feel is important to produce more affordable housing. So as we go look through the recommendations recommendations tonight, we really want you to understand that how important this tool is in order for us to achieve the goals. So we are asking staff, we were asking for council to provide direction so that we can approve the recommendations. And we'll come back with legislation in June. Going to the next one? Okay. So tonight's presentation is is broken into two parts. We'll do five projects in the first part, and then an additional two, two projects in the second part. Lindsay will provide an overview, and then Elsa will also do the recommendations. So I'll pass it on to them.
Sure. And I think we had devised this so the mayor could be here for the first part, but we're happy to just proceed. I wanted to just give you a little bit of background on the process this year. We had a really exciting funding round. This is our biggest funding round that we've had, just in terms of the number of applications, the amount of housing we're talking about, the diversity of the projects, and the total funds that were requested. We initially had eight applications come into us requesting over $13 million. We had a larger than normal funding round this year because we had some available funds left over from the previous year's round, as well as some some loan repayments that were able to come in. So we had more resources to allocate than typical. And you can see kind of on the chart here, sort of the breakdown of all the city's different contributions. And really, it takes all of those pieces to make the whole. So we're very grateful that Bellevue contributes to this program. Also important, each year, and in particular this year, we work very hard as a team to make sure your local investments are leveraged with a lot of other funding sources. For for our, you know, long term sort of trajectory, we typically see $10 for every dollar of funding that we put in. This year, we had a pretty astonishing leverage rate of about $40 for every dollar of trust fund investment. When we put together into that pool, both the Bellevue Housing Stability Program funds and some additional ARPA funds that Kenmore is investing, that rate is still a 20 to 1 return on our investment. So we're really excited about that this year. We're also incredibly excited to see the depth of affordability that these projects are achieving. We have a very significant number of units, even at the 30% of AMI level. But really, we're seeing a significant mix across 30 and all the way up to 80% AMI. And Elsa will will talk in a minute about some of the populations that serve. We had a very diverse slate of projects, including in particular, one homeownership project that we will highlight in Bellevue. So with that, Elsa's going to just talk at a very high level. We're not going to go one by one through all the projects, but there are some reference slides in the back that you can peruse at your leisure. And we're happy to also answer questions. So we'll have five projects we'll talk about here, and then we'll come back and talk about the the last two that are have a separate direction. Elsa?
Thank you. Good evening. Here's a overview of some of the projects that we are recommending tonight. I will just highlight a few key points. The Ardea Senior Housing Development is an important important partnership between Imagine Housing, a service provider, and TWG as developer. TWG is a national vertically integrated for profit developer. The Plymouth PSH is a project that was spearheaded by the city of Kenmore, in which they not only donated the the land, but they also prioritize one half of their ARPA funding to entice developers to build in their community, affordable housing in their community. In regard to the inclusion housing project, not only are we excited to invest in this organization for the first time, but we are also equally as pleased that the state is investing significant resources for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities alongside us. The Spring District was made possible by a partnership with Sound Transit, in which the city donated a portion of its land to this innovative mixed use, mixed income development. The ARCH board felt a need to invest in this project, especially during the early stages of development. Attain is an organization that we have supported in the past. They operate affordable housing units both in Kirkland and Bellevue. ARCH felt it important to provide additional resources to encourage them to continue working on this development for transitional homeless families. Next slide, please. Here's just a high level overview of the renderings of each of the projects that we spoke about.
And I think if it's okay, we can take direction here on these first five projects, and then we'll come back to the next two. So we are seeking your direction to return with legislation approving the recommendations as outlined in your packet for the five projects that we just discussed.
I think I would move forward and include the the next one as well, and then we'll discuss. Thank you.
Let's do it. Okay.
Thank you.
Elsa, so take it away.
Thank you. So the Kirkland Heights Project is a crucial project in which KCHA has purchased and is preserving a large existing property for the purposes of preserving affordability and increasing density. KCHA will be constructing three new buildings and adding floors to the existing buildings. The Habitat Project is a collaboration between Holy Cross and Habitat. Holy Cross has been a longtime steward of this property and has committed to preserving the land for homeownership, utilizing Habitat's proven land trust model, and providing community space as an asset, as a community asset.
Okay. And now we would love to entertain direction and or questions on the presentation.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. Do I have any question? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I'm looking at the attachment that breaks down the various projects. And I'm wondering, I'm looking at the cost per unit, which ranges from, you know, $395,000 per unit to a high of eight, almost $800,000 per unit. It's huge, huge gap. And particularly the King County Housing Authority Kirkland Heights Project, that's almost $800,000 a unit, even though it's a rehab, which is usually less expensive. And the soft costs are $115,000 per unit. None of the other projects have per unit costs this high or soft costs this high. Why is this project so outside the norm of what we see for both soft costs and unit costs for affordable housing projects?
Sure, I'll take a stab at answering your question.
Sure.
Thanks, member. Different different projects in particular have different, different constructibility requirements. And this is one of those projects that also, in an effort to provide the the construction for the residents that they are serving, it could be that different projects have the different finishes for the project.
I'm happy to add a little bit. We did spend quite a bit of time talking with our advisory board and with KCHA about the the costs for this project. We did note our investment is a relatively small share of the total project cost, but there are some significant cost drivers that we tried to press on and really ask them, have you have you sort of mitigated as many of the cost increases as possible? One of the, one of the most significant ones is as a, as a federal public housing authority, they do have quite a few more regulations that they are required to build, too. One of those is prevailing wages at a federal rate. They also have a unique finance, a unique financing structure that in some ways inflates artificially inflates some of the costs in in order to gain additional tax credit equity for the project. So there's funds that are loaned by KCHA into the project that come from the organization that aren't true costs. So it's a little bit in the weeds, but some of those costs are intentionally inflated in order for them to increase their eligible basis, which is the basis in which they generate tax credit equity out of that out of that program. We also know that this project has not been rehabbed pretty much since it was constructed. It's, I think, 1960s vintage, I want to say. It's a pretty old building, long overdue for rehab, and they're having to build everything back up to current code. They're also constructing an additional building that is going to provide community space for the for the whole community and update a lot of the other amenities throughout the the project. They are also updating infrastructure requirements. So the the project was not built to support this many units of housing, and they're adding a significant amount of density to the site, so they're having to update all the infrastructure. There's several different reasons. We did spend quite a bit of time talking about it with them, and we felt that for our investment in in the project, that we're getting a good return on the funds we're putting in.
And ARCH is putting in, it was asked for 2 million, but we're putting in, what, 1.56 or something like that. Okay, yeah, because this this one, normally, the rehabs are cheaper. That's why I really support buying and saving. But at 800,000 a unit.
The last thing I'll just say is they're really large units. They serve large families.
That's good.
Four and five bedroom units in there.
Oh, are they? That is good to know. Well, we need definitely need more with, I'm I'm still supportive. It's just, it was just a head scratcher, because I've been looking at your guys' reports for years, and I'm like, what is this? So and yeah, and it's great. And I understand if they have to mitigate, and the Davis Bacon laws and stuff, that makes a lot of sense to me. That's my only question. I'm generally supportive of moving it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. As I have always known that ARCH is one of the best regional, you know, collaboration in the region. I mean, I repeat myself, but it is. And we've been very proud of, you know, having grown to include so many other cities together, because these these are the regional problems. We have the regional solutions. So the the two things that kind of surprised me, one is that how much the funding has increased. I'm kind of really staggered to find out there's a request of $30 million, and Bellevue's contribution, $7.6 million, which is available. Then other partners are coming with money. And I'm sure King County and others are, you know, providing funding as well, which applaud, obviously. But I believe that, you know, I guess we can spend money if it's necessary, and if we're getting the units of housing. And I think the type of house you're getting is good, right online, you know, because I see your AMI breakdown, you know, we're struggling. We cannot get, you know, the real needed, you know, the middle housing, where even the the lower, you know, below 30%. But I think you have a real good, nice mix. So I think you're doing a good job doing that, looking for the right properties and meeting the right needs. But the challenge is that if we're spending lots of money, are we getting proportionally as many units as we have been doing with a lot less money involved? That goes back to, I think, Councilmember Robertson's question. This unit cost is just amazing. I mean, the average house in the King County, I think, is far better, not King County, maybe, well, in Bellevue's over a million and a half or something. But in other cities, it's close to 1,800, 600. In some cities, you know, around here, maybe you can get something for 500, 600. But if we're spending 800,000, 600,000, 500,000 typically for a unit, that's really mind boggling. So it's hard to get used to. So I'm just asking, you know, that you must be struggling, you know, obviously you are. So that I think that needs some conversation there, right? And we get to figure out why. But just because it's a good thing to do, we have to do it? What's what's costing with that? Where's inflation? There are many factors. I'm sure I can speculate, but I don't want to speculate. I wonder, have you been the expert? I think these questions are being raised. I think it's appropriate. So I would appreciate, maybe you can think about that. Unless you have a couple of quick answers for me, I'd be happy to listen. Everybody would be happy to. Otherwise, I would be happy to have some opportunity to really work with ARCH and with other housing providers, because I look at constructions costing half a million dollars construct unit. Gee.
I would like to just mention that that there has been, of course, a change in the market, in the construction market, to, of course, to the pandemic and increase in labor, in the labor market. In addition, we have seen quite a significant increase in the interest rates, which of course plays as a factor into the increase of some of our per unit costs. So certainly changes in the market, changes in the financial market all play a factor in the increase of the costs of units and production of units.
Yeah, that's good to know. But I think we need to know, we need to figure out what else can we do, maybe a little more creatively, innovatively. Maybe we can, instead of like Councilmember Robinson mentioned, instead of buying existing building, maybe because the location is easier. But you talk about infrastructure has to be put in there. So maybe we can defer some of those projects, which requires infrastructure expenditure, to do something maybe a little bit differently. It might, it might be harder, it might take some more time, you know, but I think it's worthwhile to have a conversation. Otherwise, we're going to keep doing this. We're going to be out of control, and we're not, we're not going to be able to afford it. And the result is going to be nobody benefit from it. Yeah. So.
No, appreciate the comments, and we'd be happy to come back and talk at another time about that.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Stokes? Yeah, thank you. I think these are good questions, but I believe that actually you answered pretty well the reasons for these. And I think you've had a long history of doing this, and I have full confidence in your ability that, one, that you will look at these things, and that you have on this, and you've explained this. We can go into more detail. But I mean, the housing cost is ridiculous. And you have to pay the same thing. I mean, it's not, it's not easy on that. And as you said, when you take a rehab, you there's savings on that. It costs a lot more to build the same building from scratch. But it does cost. And so I think you've explained it very well. We can, you know, ask other questions. But and it's always good to let us know exactly why and what you're doing on this. But again, I, it's a long history of, for me, at least, and trust in what But again, I, it's a long history of, for me at least, and trust in what Arch has been doing and, and on how they pencil it out and all that. And it's, what is exciting actually is that the number, the fact that we're spending, what, two, three times more money than we were not so long ago? That shows that we're actually meeting the needs, and we're doing what we've been talking about doing, is getting more housing. And it's going to cost. And we couldn't buy houses in Bellevue. That amount of money would buy a lot less housing. So it's, it's, I, I think you've done a good job of explaining that. And, you know, we can ask questions about it and like to know, make sure, but I really appreciate this, and I'm ready to, to, to vote for this. I think it, done a good job on it, and it's great to see you're actually increasing across the county. And I'm glad you, you expanded in terms of people being involved on this. So it's really heartening to know that we're getting this done, and when we're still struggling to get, to reach all of the needs we have in here. But Arch is really, I think it's, it's doing the best I've ever seen it, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Barxell?
Ready to vote in support.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. You know, I always, I'm always grateful for your thoughtfulness in looking at all of the proposals and spending our money wisely. I, I will say that if you could go back and just check the math on the one that Councilmember Robertson brought up, because having soft cost in the twenty-five percent sounds quite unusual. So I don't know if there might be just some allocation error, because the descriptions that you brought up would be considered construction costs and not soft costs. So I, I would expect to see that more in the, you know, ten to twelve percent range. So I think it would be worth going back and just taking a quick look at that. I would say that I, I am happy to support this, because what I see is, you know, when we were looking at our housing, we were not seeing in the pipeline housing in that zero to thirty percent. And the fact that twenty-five percent of this funding is going to the zero to thirty percent for folks exiting homelessness is amazing. I see that there is one, I believe, up in Kenmore for a hundred and seventy units for senior housing. And, and I think that that's something we need as well in Bellevue. So as we really look at the options in front of us, how we move, how we find developers that want to build more senior housing, because I just think about those that may be living alone or, or one couple living in a four-bedroom home, that if they were able to move into affordable, smaller units, then those houses are available for families. That would be amazing. That's really important. And then I just want to highlight just the fact that with the Spring District TOD, we are, looks like finally moving forward with that to get more housing. And then lastly, the Habitat for Humanity, I was actually at their Women Build on Saturday at South Park, and just, you know, when you hear about the families that are helped and the sweat equity of the two hundred and fifty hours, and then those are homeownership units, and three-bedroom, that's a family. So we, we know that we've had some school closures, because we are struggling with our enrollment numbers. So the more that we can move forward with making sure that we have housing for families is really important. So I am happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers on? Thank you for the great presentation this evening. As you can hear, I think we're all in favor of moving this forward tonight. I too would like to see just a little bit more in-depth explanation of the twenty-five percent soft costs on that. Not that we don't trust you, but we'd just like a little more information on that, just to make sure that every dollar is accounted for in going for the, you know, the, the right projects and the right costs. So, and, and I will add to the, the cheer squad of more senior affordable housing in Bellevue. It's much needed, and Councilmember Zahn makes a good point. For every unit that we have there, it might free up a single-family home for, for, for a family, if they can downsize to a condo, to an affordable unit. So it's, it's much needed in, in, in Bellevue. So as, something just to kind of keep in mind going forward, not that you don't know that already, but certainly we're all big fans for that. So with that, do I have a motion on the Arch Housing Trust Fund?
Yes, I direct staff to return with legislation approving Arch Housing Trust Fund projects.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Can we call back in the mayor at this point?
Mr. Elsia.
Oh, okay, great. I think we can move ahead, though. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yep.
Next study session tonight is another funding recommendation. This one for the City's Housing Stability Program for Affordable and Supportive Housing. In July twenty twenty-two, the city released its annual capital funding request for proposal for the Affordable and Supportive Housing. And a team of city staff and Arch staff evaluated the proposals against the council's approved housing stability program priorities and evaluation criteria, and they are providing funding recommendations for you tonight. They will highlight the recommended projects for funding and seek council direction to return at a future meeting with legislation to approve the funding recommendations. So we've added Emile King, the Planning Director, to the panel, Linda Abe, Lindsay Masters from Arch, and Elsa Kings and from Arch. And with that, I will turn it over to the panel.
Thank you for the introduction, Deputy City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. The staff team is really excited to be here tonight to talk about the twenty twenty-two capital funding round for the Housing Stability Program. We're getting money out to projects that are going to meet our city needs. So staff are seeking direction tonight on this set of funding recommendations. For this capital funding round, there was the new ability to request operation and maintenance funds as well as service funding. So this is in addition to the capital funding that we did in our first iteration of this request for proposal. So based on your direction, we will prepare legislation to come back to council. And right now, we're targeting the consent agenda in early June for that to occur. Can you go ahead and do that?
Doesn't like us today.
Go to the agenda, yeah. So just very briefly on the agenda, we'll go ahead and cover a little bit on the background of the Housing Stability Program, and then we'll go into a little bit of details on the funding recommendations, and then conclude with the direction from council.
It's really a special night here.
Perfect, thank you. So I wanted to spend a moment on the Housing Stability Program framework. So we are in the third year of this program. It began back in twenty twenty-one. This is the point one percent sales tax increase. It is being collected right now for all of King County. And this program actually takes the portion collected in Bellevue to be used by Bellevue to meet Bellevue needs. So that's the intent of this Housing Stability Program. In July of twenty twenty-two, council did approve the overall framework that you see on the screen. I want to just briefly go through the different components of this. At the very top, you can see the up to forty percent of the, the annual funds were targeted for housing partnerships. So this would be things like preservation projects as well as land acquisition. And we have a note here that as we staff up, we're going to be looking into bonding opportunities to use for that top forty percent. The middle box there is, in blue, is what we're here to talk about tonight. So this is the capital funding, though it does include the operations, maintenance, and services. We're going to be calling that OMS from here on out, so that's our new acronym about that, operations, maintenance, and service dollars. You will notice tonight that we are going to be talking about some awards for that OMS money. We do have the ability for proposers to ask for a, a five-year commitment for that money. We're going to be talking about the year one commitment tonight. And we did, based on working with the council, allow up to twelve thousand five hundred per unit to be requested in that funding. And the actual funding amounts are lower than that, but that was the, the max that could be asked for in the OMS. The, the OMS money was really important to council when they set out the framework to make sure that we have buildings that are operating well and have the right services on-site to serve the residents there. Just very briefly, the last two components down towards the bottom of the framework are the fifteen percent for behavioral health and housing-related services. We do that under a separate RFP that, that comes to council every two years. And then the, the final part is the up to five percent being used for administration of this. So staff, both in community development in, at Arch and in our Parks and Community Services Department to work on human, human service needs. So while the focus tonight is on that blue area, if council does want to talk about the overall program and how we're allocating money, the fall would be the right time to do that. So we would need council direction to do that, but we thought it was important to relay what the, the framework is. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to the staff team who looked at the applications.
Great, thanks. And I just want to again express our gratitude for the, the additional staff capacity that was created, both at Arch and also within the city. I wanted to introduce you to Patrick Tippi, who is the newest member of our team, is going to be dedicated to helping with the Housing Stability Program here in Bellevue. I'm so really excited to have him join us and get to know you. So let's see if I can get the slides to work. Did it skip one? Yes, it did. So just again, the overall process, as we set it up in the framework that we presented to you last year, was this bucket of funds was really going to be designed to complement the trust fund process, really leverage the existing processes and funding coordination that we do on your behalf each year. So it's a little bit different. We have a partnership that's much more closely working with City of Bellevue staff. We have an interdepartmental staff team that helps to meet and deliberate on the proposals and come up with the recommendations that you ultimately see here and get to approve. The council had set from early on a, a few key priorities for this funding. One was that we, there was going to be a focus on preventing homelessness and housing instability. Two, we were going to really try and achieve some deeper affordability in the projects that we're funding, down to the thirty percent AMI level, and really have a focus on vulnerable, underserved populations. A lot of that was driven by the state policy intent for this funding and a lot of the eligibility requirements that come with the dollars. So as Emile mentioned, we are in the second year of, of running a process. The first year, we put out an RFP just for capital funds of up to six million dollars. We had a few applications at the time, only one that was really ready to proceed. Oh, and it's, it's doing it by itself now, but I'm going to try to go back for you. There we go. But we were really excited to have an award to the LifeWire Hope Starts Here Project. That was our first capital award. That amounted to one point six million. We're really excited that the staff have closed the financing for that project. And construction is well underway, so we'll be excited to see that open this year. For the twenty twenty-two funding round, we had been able to accrue some funds, and so may have a larger pot of funds available. We advertised up to ten and a half million this year, and we're excited that we got more applications, larger amount of requests, a total of over thirty million total. We're recommending tonight six point eight million in funding, and that's divided between one award for capital funding and two awards for ongoing OMS funds that are two projects. We will be walking through each of those one by one, so you have a chance to, to look at each of them. We're just going to talk tonight about the projects that we're recommending for funding and, and not the ones that we are not recommending, but happy to answer questions about, about any of those. Okay. I think that advanced correctly. No, it didn't. We, okay, there we go. So in, in summary, we had four projects, five distinct requests, because one of the projects was requesting both capital and services funds. You can see the breakdown in the recommendations. And just a note on the OMS awards, they are intended to be five-year awards, but also subject to renewal, because we know that these are meant to be long-term assets in the community, and we want to see the, the stability of those services long-term. So with that, I will try to advance your slides for you and, and let Elsa walk you through each project.
Thank you. So I will again try to provide a high level on the project, just because we're short on time. So we are grateful for the opportunity to be able to invest some OMS, OMS funding into the Plymouth Crossing Project. We fully expect that this project will be, will be a, a model for future PSH projects elsewhere. Next slide, please. The LifeWire Hope Starts Here Project was, as Lindsay mentioned previously, the first project that we funded through the Housing Stability Program. But just, just a, a quick reminder, it's a twenty-five unit project that serves, that serves vulnerable populations, specifically domestic violence survivors. It is currently in the final stages of construction, and we are expecting that this project will be in service by the end of, by summer. And again, the Spring District Project, we talked about this project earlier. We are very excited to utilize the Housing Stability Program for the capital, for capital funding towards this project. We, the cap, the Housing Stability Capital Program, capital funding, excuse me, will specifically support forty intellectual and developmental disability units within the larger project. Forty, these forty units will be integrated into the two hundred and thirty-five unit transit-oriented development. Next slide, please.
Sorry. All right. So to, to wrap it up, we are asking for your direction to return with legislation approving these funding recommendations, both for the capital and OMS awards.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you Deputy Mayor for taking over for me in that last item. You know, when I look at the criteria or the values here in, in awarding this, I, I hear the voices of the council. Everybody had a, a say in this criteria, and it's really gratifying to see how it's being used. So we'll start with the Deputy Mayor as liaison to the Human Services Commission.
Thank you so much, and three fantastic projects. Thanks for the presentation this evening. Just a couple of quick questions, but I am in favor of moving this forward. So first, on the renewal of the contracts every five years, are there certain criteria and benchmarks that they have to meet during that five-year period? What, how are you going to evaluate them based on if we're going to renew their contract or not?
Yeah, so as this being the first batch, we are going to be setting up a relationship with those recipients and doing our monitoring program with them. So part of the, the details of each effort is to, to, in the application, they requested the money to do specific things, so ensuring that they're actually working on those specific items, whether it's operation and maintenance or the services. Each project is applying for slightly different things as well. So each building does have a different kind of need statement that, that they're bringing forward. So we are giving the, the first five years of, of award, but even during that five-year period, there is annual monitoring that happens with these providers.
Okay, okay. I just want to ensure there's, there are some, there are some teeth to the monitoring, and it's not an automatic, you know, renewal of, of the five-year, and that they do have to meet some benchmark. I mean, yes, everyone is unique and different, but just want to make sure that we keep an eye on that going, especially since it's the first group. Second question, on the, and, and this is so needed in our, in our community about, and I'm so thrilled that this is here, the forty units for those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. How is that going to be, I guess, publicized for, for folks to get into those units? How, how does that work in this particular program, which I'm assuming is a little bit different than, than, than other units? So can you, can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, we are in the early stages, or the, the project is in the early stages of coordinating services with, with open doors. And so we are expecting to have, to have a more robust partnership information shortly. But at the moment, they are, the Bridge Housing is expecting to coordinate with Open Doors, which they have a, a, a program that specifically serves residents with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Did you want to add?
Yeah, I just, I was just going to echo, we're really excited about the partnership that they, that they have started there. We recognize- that they that they have started there. We recognize it is pretty early still in the formation of that partnership. They're going to come, we expect them to come back and reapply for OMS funds next year, by which time we we hope to see that they'll have fleshed out a lot of the the key points around referrals and level of services and and things like that.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. You know, I am so, so excited about this, because I was reading the packet going, two and a half years ago, that's when we voted as a council to take advantage of the 1,590 money to allow us to do this work. And it's it takes a while, especially while we're trying to survive and recover from COVID. But here we are, you know, the the LifeWire units, it sounds looks like those are going to be revamped and remodeled and ready this summer. Really excited to see, especially the operations piece, because, you know, what we hear a lot is that the very people that are working in these organizations providing support services are really one step from being clients themselves from the standpoint of living wages. So really grateful that LifeWire requested funding so that they can lift up some of the wages for their workers as well as operations. And then when I had a chance to tour the Plymouth Crossing Permanent Supportive Housing, just hearing about the services they were going to provide, I thought I heard there was going to be an X-ray machine there. They would be, you know, doctors coming in and actually serving the community. So the fact that we're going to provide onsite behavioral health services and to do it in a five-year tranche, so it is stable, reliable funding, so that they can actually get people in to provide those services. So I'm really excited to see that piece. I mean, I agree with the accountability. And yet, if we expect them, you know, to be requesting funding every single year, that's not reliable. So I really like the fact that we're looking at five years. On the the Bridge TOD at Spring District, I've met a number of families in our community where they're they are not able to have their loved ones at in an intellectual and developmentally disabled housing. And so they're trying to care for them in their home, but they're aging themselves. And so it is a really tough situation. So I'm glad to see that we have some of those housing units as well. I I hope that the Bellevue workforce housing actually is able to come back when they work through their arrangements. I guess the question I have, so I fully support the 6.8 million. The 10.9 available, is that all the money that's available to date? And the reason I ask is because, you know, we started collecting, but we weren't seeing a lot of applications. So what's our current, I guess, fund balance once we have granted or issued the 6.8?
Yeah, I can give you an update on the fund balance. So we are partway through the third year of collections. So we did 2021 collections, 2022. If council were to award this this funding amount, we would have about a little over 8 million left in as a fund balance. So that's the order of magnitude of what would be remaining. As as was noted, we are significantly ramping up the the size of the request. So the 8 million might seem like a lot, but I think in future capital rounds, we are going to be getting big requests for money just based on the trajectory of things. That's the the order of magnitude. The annual collections are, they were about 9.7 the first year, a little under 11 million the second year. And then we've done some projections of what they would be in the in the out years as well.
Okay. Well, my hope is that if we get development coming, that we had talked about bonding against future revenues, because you're right, 8 million for capital is is really quite small. I'm just really glad to see that when we look at all of these different funding, you know, just like with the last presentation, we've got eight to 10 different funders to make these projects work. And so we want to be one of the anchors to move with even more speed in this zero to 60% area median income. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
So yeah, I I join councilmembers on about and Deputy Mayor Newenhouse about the support, strong support for the units of the Spring District 120th TOD funding. And I appreciate that we are looking at five-year tranches for supportive housing or for the O and M. My question is, and I was trying to remember, a few years ago, we directed staff to develop a guideline for best practices for permanent supportive housing that would be shared with providers. And I am wondering if we have used that guideline as a crosswalk for vetting the any provider that wants O and M money from us. Have we done that?
I'll let the staff team talk a little bit maybe first, and then I can follow up with maybe the the long-term aspirations for that that guide. Yeah.
I might need you to to weigh in. I I the guide I'm familiar with, that we worked on developing was around community engagement. And so this this project, I think, was in pretty well along with this community engagement by the time that guide was developed. But there was some discussions about learning from their experience to to help inform that guide. Is there an additional piece I'm missing?
No, is that the is that the the guide you're?
We've done so much work over so many years. I don't remember all the details.
Yeah, so we ended up with a, Councilmember Robertson, we ended up with the the Community Engagement Guide for Supportive Housing, and that that document is complete and being used by staff. It is something that, you know, it's most useful for projects at their early stages. Most a number of these are probably even a little bit further along in the process, not at the very beginning. So we are, to answer your question, we are using that guide. Some of these, it's a bit of a catch-up to to get it to these specific projects. But any new projects, we are relaying that Community Engagement Guide for Supportive Housing to them.
Okay. So I guess if that was the sum total of the guide, I think I wanted it to be much more expansive, but I think that was voted down. But the I would like to definitely look at the effectiveness as well as any issues, because we want the facilities and the services in Bellevue to provide really effective services to help people stabilize, help people move on. I hope and would like more information before we actually vote on this, to to understand what sorts of accountability we are going to be looking at in terms of renewing the grants. I definitely want to make sure that the the ones that we are funding are ones that are effective, are good neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. So if I could have some additional information offline about what we will be tracking and what we will be looking at in terms of evaluating the performance of the organizations that we are funding, I'm very interested in that, because, you know, carrots carrots should come with some accountability. So and I'm very much in favor of wanting to make sure that we're funding only the programs that are super effective and that are also good neighbors. So other than that, I'm I'm happy to move this along. Thanks.
Do you have any comments on that question about assessing effectiveness and?
Yeah, we will pull together a summary of how we're going to be doing the monitoring. And then also to Councilmember Robertson's question about, you know, what is success going to look like? Because we're we were very interested in providing funding to providers. Actually, there was debate about should it be 10 or 15 years? We thought that was too long. So it's five years, but also with the monitoring and the intervening years to make sure that they are doing what they're being funded to do.
Right. Because in their application, don't they have to have a goal that they're trying to achieve and can should be a measurable goal, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I think this this is very good, and I'm totally behind this. On the accountability thing, I I do think that it's good to look at and see what you have. But again, from what I've seen, obviously, you know, we're staffing, we're working on this, and we're you have guidelines, and you seem to have a lot of conversation with them and all. I think you're that's a big part of your job, that you're doing it well. It's just good for us all to see and kind of feel. It helps us to feel some comfort level on it. But as you've gone through this, you have a real, I think, grasp of what you're doing, what's going on. So I think focusing on keeping that going is very, very good. And it's hard, you know, to not have some sometimes questions about it. But again, I think the reporting is very good. But what's really exciting is having these seeing these things come to to fruition. And the one that I remembered and was really excited about and told Councilmember Robertson, because we were involved in the sound trans, the sound transit things that at in the Spring District and specifically on that one project. And that was when we were trying to do, figure out what we're going to do, what Bellevue's piece of that property. And so it is so exciting to see that actually come to fruition, and it's it's real now, not just a dream. So that's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I support moving this forward and appreciate the work that you've done to find projects that align with the criteria. So thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Senator Lee. This is very important. And I think it's good that to see you coming back. Recall, you know, when we first put this budget in, there's a lot of controversy, right? I mean, we were we're very much in community upheaval as to, you know, what this is going to be, what turning out to be. And we are fortunate that, you know, we have real good staff work, due diligence, working with, you know, good service providers. You know, this has never been done before. These are new people on the scene. The only one is Congregation for Homeless, you know, they know how to manage homeless shelter. But the Plymouth Plymouth, right? They are new, and they haven't done this before. And we are asking them to provide.
No, that's not true. That is not true. They are a longstanding, respected provider of affordable and supportive housing, as is LifeWire.
Regardless. It's new experience for Bellevue, new experience for the people of Bellevue who live in this in the area. And they're very concerned. They have lots of questions, and I have a lot of questions. So I think a lot of people do. But we chose them because of, you know, maybe as Mayor was talking about, we feel that they are, you know, best fit, that we can have them. And we don't know a lot of things. So most of the people have to work by by faith, right? So we believe we look at your qualification and all that, and you will do a good job. So we have required agreements, right? Good neighbors agreement. But even good neighbors agreement, there are many things you cannot clearly delineate delineate just on agreement, because we don't really know what's going to happen. So there's nothing much to agree on. So we have to do it on faith, that they will make sure they follow the spirit of things, and making sure that we can evaluate when we move along. And there's flexibility in coming up with, you know, new way of making sure they manage it right. And basically, it's going to be satisfactory to the neighborhood and to the City of Bellevue, to the spirit of what we want to see. And so far, it seems to be proven out to be. Okay? And we we by faith, we say, well, when we come to time to evaluate, you know, how we're doing, I think that's what Councilmember Robertson's talking about. What kind of best practices, what have they been doing? Are they do we do have communication with the neighbors and making sure that, you know, we're moving in the right direction? And so it's going to happen, and we're going to see how well they are doing. Apparently, you know, we're pretty satisfied. So the relationship's good. You know, we 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 work on a lot of it. So on faith, that's that's important, because it's something like this, it's got to be on that basis. Because if it happens, something we don't like, it's too late. So we got to make sure that we operate on same position. So I want to make sure, you know, so we talk about being flexible. They can help us making sure that, you know, we are we we're satisfied, and they will comply with what we, the neighbors, would be willing to live with. So have we been keeping track? Have we been working with neighbors? Have we been pretty much in line? And we have been building good communication and relationships.
Yeah, I can speak specific to the three projects that we are recommending funding. These, I mean, these are known projects. So the I can just quickly go through them. The Plymouth down in East Gate, that's been around for a number of years. They they do work across this region. It is the first time Plymouth is in Bellevue. And they've, you know, partnered with others down on that campus to do the outreach for that project. Hope Starts Here, LifeWire, that's a known known project. So that's a needed project for Bellevue, and it's a good one that we're giving money to. And then the, I think, as was mentioned, the Spring District, that's a known project as well. So these are, these are projects that have done their due diligence. We vetted them against their monetary ask, and we think funding them would be a wise thing to do, with the caveat that we want to get a little bit more information on the OMS money and how we're going to be monitoring that to the City Council before we finalize things.
Okay. So in the East Gate specifically, the East Gate project, have the neighbors been in good communication?
Maybe in our follow-up to council, we can do a quick recap on the outreach that was done for that, the the larger campus down there. So that included the the men's shelter, Plymouth, and then the workforce housing. So we're happy to put it put some information in the packet to refresh council's memory on that.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Yeah, the extensive outreach that took a year and delayed that project by a year, but got a community of people in support of a program. We've done a remarkable job. And I I feel so fortunate that we have some of the best providers in the region working with the city. And that's all because of you bringing them in and working with them and collaborating. And we're very lucky, we really are, to have this type of talent. So thank you for this. I definitely am supportive of all the the funding recommendations. But in the future, I think we need to see more, a bigger human service budget. And I think the Deputy Mayor has spoken to that as well. And I think that we have an opportunity here, maybe to generate more funding for some behavioral health. I know there's a lot of criteria it has to meet in order to use that 1,590 money. But as we increase our responsibility to same-day services and supportive housing, hardest thing is getting the providers. And just the 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 great thing about Prop One that just passed, it's all about paying to educate people and get them ready to be providers. But we are going to have to pay people to serve our community. And so if there's a way that we can increase our human service funding with the 1,590, I'd I'd appreciate it, looking at that in the future.
So.
Okay. So I I I'm understanding from Councilmember Robertson that she's not interested in having this come to consent. Is that true? You'd like to have it come back?
No, I just want the information before it comes back. And they can send it to me. That's fine if it comes back on consent. I just want to know the information.
All right. Thank you. So Deputy Mayor, could you make a motion and to have this come back on consent?
Certainly. I move to direct staff to return with legislation for council approval on consent for a total of 6 million in capital funds and 815,000 in annual operations, maintenance, and services funds.
Second, can I also request, I'd like to get some information on what I asked the staff to do?
Yes, and they already told you you would get that. So.
Thank you.
Yes. And this is, you said, on consent, Deputy Mayor?
Correct.
Okay. And it's seconded? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Okay, we have two more items. We have a land use item. And I'm going to let Diane Carlson introduce it, and then we'll kind of review the quasi-judicial process, because some of us haven't done this before, and some of us, it's been a long time since we've done it. So we'll go over the the hearing examiner's criteria and the limits of our contemplation on that.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a quasi-judicial rezone. And given the quasi-judicial nature, Kathy Gerla, our city attorney, will introduce the item for the council. And we are joined here by Liz Stedt, Land Use Director, and Amy Tars, the Senior Planner in Development Services Department. They will be reviewing the the information from the hearings examiner. So I will turn it over to Kathy to give you the instructions and introduce the item.
Thank you. So this is a site-specific rezone for you tonight. It's considering the rezone of a 3.17 acre parcel within the East Gate subarea. This implements a 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendment that the council adopted that changed the land use designation of this property from office. the land use designation of this property from office to office limited business two or O L B two. As Ms. Carlson mentioned, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. As you probably recall, last year, you agreed to amend the code to get yourselves out of the business of doing almost all quasi-judicial proceedings, but this is the one remaining type, the site-specific rezones that is still within your jurisdiction, because by state law, the legislative body has to decide site-specific rezones, and the courts have said these are quasi-judicial. So the process is that the hearing examiner holds an evidentiary hearing, which she did in this case, and then makes a recommendation and to you, the council, and the council makes the final decision based upon the record before the hearing examiner. So in this case, the hearing examiner has recommended approval, and tonight, you're not being asked to make any decisions. The purpose is to allow Ms. Stead and Ms. Tars to do an overview for you of what's, of, of the project, and allow you to ask any questions based on things that are in the record. We will come back at the May 22 meeting and ask for approval of the actual rezone. So before I turn it over to Ms. Stead and Ms. Tars, I will recommend, Mayor, that you do ask the council members if they have any ex-party contacts, because, that they would disclose on the record, because this is quasi-judicial.
So Councilmember Barksdale, any ex parte communications on this?
No.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
I have not. Councilmember Stokes?
No.
Councilmember Robertson? Councilmembers on?
No.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, good evening again. So we are here, and I'm joined today by Amy Tars, one of our senior planners. Amy was the planner who presented this file at the hearing examiner, and so she'll be doing the same for you this evening. You might notice just a couple housekeeping memos. The slide presentation format is not what you're accustomed to for council meetings. This was prepared for the hearing examiner and is the same presentation that is in the record, and we are obligated to stay with the record at this point. So I just wanted to kind of clear that up. The request tonight, it is a site-specific rezone, and the property is located at 15400 Southeast 30th Place, and the request is to amend the generalized zoning map from office O to office limited business two or O L B two. You will see both of those designations in the presentation. They are used interchangeably of office limited business and O L B. So please note if you have that. This will make the property consistent with the comp plan land use designation. So I'm going to go ahead and pass this over to Amy, who will go through the presentation that was provided to the hearing examiner and give you a little more information about the request.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. And I'd like to start off with a little history to take us to where we're at today. In 2017, the City Council adopted the East Gate Office Park Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. That amendment was to basically reclassify three properties in the East Gate subarea from O office to O L B office limited business. This subject property is one of those parcels. In 2021, a rezone of the adjacent property at 15325 Southeast 30th Place was also approved by the City Council, and that rezone was from O office and C B community business to O L B two office limited business two. As you can see on this vicinity map, the subject property is surrounded by primarily commercial uses and office uses. And to the southwest corner, you will see the I-90 ramp, which is about five minutes drive from this property. And the East Gate Park and Ride, which is not on the map, but is further west of the I-90 ramp, is about a 25-minute walk to this property. Next slide, please. So as mentioned already, this is a process three quasi-judicial review wherein the City Council will make the final decision, and the hearing examiner makes a recommendation to the City Council. Concurrent with this process three review, there is also required SEPA or State Environmental Policy Act review. Staff is adopting the existing determination of non-significance from the East Gate Office Comprehensive Plan Amendment, because this property was included in that particular amendment. Next slide, please. In addition, as part of the land use code, there are required public notices for, for a Type III review, and staff has conducted all the necessary public notices, including the notice of application on December 1st, 20, excuse me, 2022, and a combined notice of recommendation and public hearing of March 9, 2023. In addition to that, staff has also conducted an informational public meeting on December 14, 2022, where one member of the public attended. However, this person did not provide any public comments. The public hearing was not attended by any public, by members of the public, and we also did not receive any public comments during the, from the time of the notice of application up to today. Next slide, please. This slide shows the existing land use classifications for the property and all the adjacent properties. As you can see on this slide, the subject property is currently classified as O L B office limited business. And almost half of this image shows the same yellow-orange color on the west half of the slide, and that indicates that this is also all, all surrounded by O L B or office limited business. And on this, on the other half, which is the southeast and east, I'm sorry, southwest and west section of the image, you'll see that the, the large area is actually covered with commercial, with community business or C B. And to the north, we see a couple of properties that are classified as single-family high density. Next slide, please. In terms of the zoning, the existing subject property is still zoned O office, while all the yellow-orange sites that were also identified in the land use, on the comprehensive land use plan, actually shows O L B two. And in addition to that, what we see is a, a hatched area that's equivalent to about 300 feet, that's a transition overlay that's included in, in this subject property. What you see on the left of the subject property that is outlined in blue is the two parcels that was included in the East Gate Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And as you can see, the, these two properties have already been rezoned to O L B two. That particular rezone has the same goal as what we are currently reviewing today for the subject property. This slide shows a comparative analysis of the zoning dimensional requirements for the existing zoning, which is O office, to the proposed O L B two office limited business. What you'll see is that there will be an increase in the density and a reduction in the structure setbacks by rezoning this property from O to O L B two. However, there will be no changes to the lot coverage, the maximum impervious surface, or the maximum hard surface coverage. In addition, the transition overlay will remain on this property. Next slide. Staff has conducted an analysis of the proposed rezone for compliance with the rezone decision criteria of the land use code, and has determined that it complies with all the criteria. And I will just go through each of them very quickly. First criteria, the rezone is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff finds that the rezone to a mixed-use higher-density office with retail and services within walking distance of office employment. Yeah. With office employment supports the comprehensive plan vision and East Gate subarea policies. Next slide, please. The rezone bears a substantial relation to the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff finds that the proposal supports pedestrian-oriented and transit-oriented development by allowing a greater mix of complementary land uses and appropriate increased development intensity. Next slide, please. The rezone is warranted in order to achieve consistency with the comprehensive plan or because of a need for additional property in the proposed land use district classification, or because the classification, I'm sorry, or, or because the proposed zoning classification is appropriate for.
Reasonable development of the subject property.
Yeah, for reasonable development of the subject property. And as we have presented earlier, the whole purpose of this rezone is to make the zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan land use classification. The rezone will not be materially detrimental to users or property in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. Staff finds that the East Gate Office Park Comprehensive Plan Amendment already determined that an O L B land use designation for this property is appropriate for East Gate's Employment Center designation. This rezone protects and enhances adjacent residential neighborhoods with the design requirements, transition area standards, and increase trail connectivity. Next slide, please. The rezone has merit and value for the community as a whole. Staff finds that the rezone will allow greater mix of complementary land uses, modest but effective motorized and non-motorized transportation improvements, and appropriate increased development intensity to meet demand for continued job and economic growth. And with that, I conclude my presentation, and I'm available, and we're available to answer your questions.
Thank you for being so thorough about that. So the criteria that you just went through, slide by slide, do you have it listed on one slide? I know it is in our packet, but I just wonder if we, if you have a slide that has the hearing examiner's criteria?
We do not have a slide with it listed at this.
All right. Well, then, let me just say, we're not taking action tonight. We can discuss the process, the quasi-judicial process, and we can discuss, ask questions or on the criteria, but we can't really discuss outside of the criteria that the hearing examiner used to make her recommendation. So we may or may not have anything to say. This has been very educational. Is there anybody who has a comment or question? I'm not seeing any, so, okay. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I don't know what the criteria are, so I can't speak to it.
Okay, you need to stick, stay within the confines.
Yeah, I don't know what's in the confines.
Okay, so I have it on my screen. Here, let me just give you my computer. And you can also answer questions outside of the meeting, correct? Based on this, okay? Feel okay with that?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thanks so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, can we keep going here? We have one more item. This is an action item. Go ahead, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is our last item this evening, is a proposed ordinance declaring graffiti a public nuisance. The council discussed graffiti removal at the June 2022 staff, council retreat, and staff returned in March of this year with a draft ordinance for council discussion. Based on the feedback at that meeting, staff is returning tonight to seek council's adoption of the proposed ordinance. And at the table, we have Jessica Nadelman, Senior Assistant Attorney with the City Attorney's Office, and Liz Stead, Land Use Director, Development Services Department. And I believe that I will hand it over to Jessica to kick off the presentation.
Thank you. Hello, all. We're saving the best for last here. Okay. We're here to ask you about adopting an ordinance, amending the city code to define graffiti as a nuisance. And our agenda tonight is to tell you a little bit about that ordinance, talk about how it is going to be enforced, and the education that goes along with it, and then propose that we monitor its progress and come back to you with some more information in the first quarter of 2024. So as was just mentioned, this was stemmed from the adopted 2023-24 budget, which had an item concerning keeping Bellevue safe, clean, and vibrant. On March 6, we had a council meeting in which we were given direction to come back with an ordinance declaring graffiti a nuisance, and to explain how that was going to be enforced, and discuss the education and assistance piece that goes along with the ordinance. So as a reminder, the ordinance is, amends the code to add graffiti as a nuisance under our nuisance code, to be enforced by our code enforcement staff under, the code under chapter 1.18. And Liz is going to speak to the education and assistance piece that goes along with the enforcement.
Thank you, Jessica. The enforcement action will be taken by code compliance staff, and we discussed this a bit at our last meeting, but a little more information. As you're all aware, all of our enforcement actions are by complaint. We do not proactively enforce unless there is a life safety issue at stake, and then, of course, we would move in. And so in this case, if we did have a complaint from somebody about some graffiti on a person's property, we would contact that responsible party, and we would use what we like to call our neighborly approach, and honestly, is that in all of our enforcement actions. It's something that I feel very strongly about, and which our code enforcement officers are really very fantastic at doing. We would look for voluntary compliance. We always try to get to voluntary compliance with all of our nuisance cases, and we generally have a success rate of about 98%. So when we do have nuisance cases, the code enforcement officers work very proactively with the complainants and also with the responsible parties to get to that compliance. It is always our last, last available option to take it any further than that voluntary compliance, and we, we have a very good success rate there. We will be looking at education and informational materials will be provided. We have started working on a brochure that will be completed after this meeting, and we have everything organized out, so we are looking at that. The code compliance officers will provide that when they first make contact with the responsible parties. And we do need to note that as much as we like to tout our success rate in voluntary compliance, if there is non-compliance, it would result in a civil violation and potential further action. So we do have to acknowledge that that could, could be the case, but again, we rarely find ourselves in that situ, in that situation, especially for the nuisance items. In terms of the education and assistance, as I mentioned, the code compliance staff will be passing out these brochures. We have, the brochure will include tips on removal of graffiti. It will provide resources for what are the best materials and how to remove graffiti. It will also provide. It will also provide referrals to Jubilee Reach, which we have contacted, and they are willing to assist in that manner and help people who don't have the resources to remove it on their own with that removal. The brochure will also talk a little bit about the potential for the graffiti-resistant paint that council brought up in this last meeting, so we'll have some information about that as well. One of the other things that we're going to be doing is we're actually preparing an article for It's Your City, and that will come out in the June issue of It's Your City, and that will discuss this new ordinance and how people can try and keep graffiti from really taking over their, their property as well through some of these means of removal and then potentially the other paints. So we'll be providing that information in a variety of ways to try and get it out to the greater community as well as anyone who is in the unfortunate situation of having graffiti on their property. So potential future programming, we do recognize that we, there are things we don't know yet. And so we are proposing that staff return in the first quarter of 2024. At that time, we will have had some experience. We can see, you know, kind of how the, how the program is working, and we can monitor the effectiveness. And then we can, if there are additional adjustments that are warranted at that time, we can certainly look at that then, and we can have an additional consideration. And we understand that this is an area of prime interest for our council as part of the Keep Bellevue Beautiful programming. And we'd like to make sure that we stay on top of it and check the effectiveness of this program. So we, we do propose that we would come back in 2024, Q1. And by then, we should have some good data on what we're seeing and how it's, how the program is working out. So at this point, we would ask that if council desires that we adopt an ordinance amending chapter 9.10 of the Bellevue City Code to define graffiti as a public nuisance. And I will turn that back over to the mayor for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Deputy Mayor, this is your initiative. I'll let you start.
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you, Liz and Jessica, for tremendous work you've done on this thus far. I want to thank my colleagues as well for supporting this ordinance to date, going all the way back when this was a retreat topic, but also inserting this into the budget as well. You know, and this is something that has, you know, great interest in our, in our community as we've had numerous residence businesses, the BDA, Chamber, et cetera, all weigh in on this, on this important issue. And it's a, it's a key pillar of the Keep Bellevue Beautiful initiative. So, you know, graffiti like litter and shopping carts has been a growing concern amongst those businesses and residents. I'm just thrilled that we're addressing it and that we're in a position to do something about it this evening. And it's really an opportunity to protect the Bellevue brand. You know, and just, I won't go into all the issues or all, all the description of why this is important to do. I've done that once before already, but, and, but what I did really like is in the memo packet, the code enforcement has just such a tremendous track record of success. I don't think this is going to be any different, but as you said, Liz, you know, 98%, this is resolved without any additional action. And even with the addition of graffiti, I don't really see that, you know, moving all that much. But I'm so also thankful that we're going to bring this back after six months. And if we need to adjust this in any way, we're, we can do that, one way or the other, depending on the data. And would love you to touch on that in terms of what kind of data we are, we're going to collect. I could assume some of the baseline data in terms of, you know, number of reports, how many were actually voluntary. It was, it was, it was cleaned up. How much, if any, went to an actual civil violation? All that will be tracked, I'm assuming. But, you know, this neighborly approach is, you know, kind of that Bellevue approach. And I think that's so important to, to continue. And, you know, the compliance officer shares that helpful information about the resources that you mentioned to help mitigate the violation as described in our package as well. You know, this unique flyer and packet of information. I love the fact that you're already thinking ahead to the, to our, to our newsletter or, or, It's Your City, to have an article in there. I think that's great as well. So whatever we can do to inform our residents and businesses of this, of this ordinance is, is going to be very helpful, as well as the ability for Jubilee Reach. If they are unable to do it on their own, they can actually call Jubilee or I'll give them the resources to call. The number and the contact information. Call Jubilee Reach, and Jubilee Reach can, can remove the graffiti on behalf of that resident or business. So I'm thrilled that we're at this point. I'm excited that this is before us. And again, really appreciate the support of my colleagues on this. But again, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Actually, I'm, I'm, I'm going to let us go. So Councilmember Zon is next.
Yes, thank you. You know, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of the, of the packet and the information that came back from our feedback about how do we make sure that we are addressing graffiti? That, and I appreciate the work that's gone into, like, creating the outreach so that the goal is to remove graffiti. And the, the neighborly approach I really like. I guess my question is, as we think about this being reviewed in six months and coming back, I mean, I would like our, us to consider whether, when it comes back and we look at the effectiveness, whether that's, this gets folded into the, the Keep Bellevue Beautiful because we actually see other cities, in fact, recently several neighboring cities as well as the Chinatown International District would have community events where they're actually picking up litter as well as cleaning up graffiti. And it just seems like this is a really community-building type of, of potential. So I just wonder if there is going to be potentially a way to look at how some of this work might have been developed through code enforcement, but ultimately, it may actually be more through the Bellevue cleaning or the, the Keep Bellevue Beautiful aspect where, at the same time that we're picking up litter, graffiti can also be cleaned up as well. So I guess I, as I'm reading the packet, it says, "Council's dialogue will determine whether further action is needed." And I guess that would be my question is, right now, what we're asked to do is move to adopt the ordinance. Do we need anything else that would create this commitment to do more and, and look at how the, the actual graffiti cleanup could be done in multitude of ways and not just only through code compliance from a, now you have a complaint versus a neighbor helping neighbor type of way?
Sure, that's a, it's a good question because it is, you know, one of the things we could do is we could, it would be great if you provided direction, but council or staff could come back in six months with the data so we understand what problems we've seen and what's on. And we could come back with some preliminary ideas for council to consider about, you know, responses to the data and what we're seeing. So that could be one way to do it. And then I do think Keep Bellevue Beautiful program is the home for any sort of assistance. I think you're right on there. It's certainly not code compliance, but I have been speaking with Mike McCormick, Councilman, who is leading up the Keep Bellevue Beautiful program. So he is aware, and he's been doing a lot of research on other jurisdictions and how they're handling some of their more programmatic efforts around graffiti. So we could use this time as our trial period and then come back with some suggestions about what, you know, what are some other additional steps that we could add on that would be helpful for our community.
So is that something that we need to include in this motion to adopt so that we have that or a separate motion? Help me, I just want to make sure that I understand the protocol correctly.
I think that if we hear from the council that there's an interest that supports what you're recommending, which as I understand is in six months, return with data and prelimin, and, and the staff bring back preliminary recommendations on responses to that data and recommendations on how we best include this program in our Keep Bellevue Beautiful program.
Yes, so if.
So if we can just kind of do a head nod or shake to that idea and also, of course, comment on what is being proposed here. That would be helpful. Okay, good. Well, I'll check you off the list. Councilmember Barxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, head nod.
Okay.
Question about the assistance. What, who defines whether it's a qualifying need? Is it Jubilee Reach or is it the city?
It would be Jubilee Reach.
I, I guess I'm just thinking if someone has a qualifying need then, and there's a disconnect, right? That we, we think there's someone who has a qualifying need, but maybe they don't. So maybe that's where it goes to another outlet. I think similar to what Councilmembers I was mentioning.
I think that's exactly right. We would be able to use this time to kind of explore, are there other people that don't quite reach the Jubilee, reach the Jubilee Reach? It's getting late. But they don't quite get there for that type of assistance. But at the same time, there is something that maybe the city could do to help them remove the graffiti. So this will provide us with some time. And one of the things we will also be doing is getting that feedback directly from those code compliance officers who are meeting with people and hearing. So, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, you talked about what are, you know, what are we going to learn? You know, we're going to learn, you know, how many cases there are. We're going to learn where they're located. We're going to learn, are they on private property or right-of-way? As we're, you know, all of those things. But we're also going to get the feedback directly from the people who are affected, and we will learn from that as well. It won't be as quantitative, but there will be, you know, we will be able to learn what those needs are through that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, can we extend the meeting to 10:10? Is there a motion? I would, I would love to, but I'm not sure your fellow council members are ready.
I would extend the meeting to 10:10.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Jennifer?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So we're on you, I believe?
I would move to adopt this and vote and get out by 10:00.
And how do you feel about Councilmember Zon?
I'm fine with it. I don't think it needed a special motion. And I would point out that when we started discussion, there was 14 minutes left, and three council members took it all.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I like your proposal. One question, what makes Jubilee Reach special that they can do this? Are there other organizations that can help with this?
They have reached out in similar circumstances. We've only had one circumstance that we know of where, you know, somebody has said, "I really need this assistance," and Jubilee Reach did step in. So I think your point, or where I'm going to go with your question is that there probably, you know, there may be some other nonprofit organizations that could also assist. And during the six months, we'll certainly be looking to see if there are other opportunities for other nonprofits to step in as well. I think that's important to think about.
End of my question. I support the.
Thank you.
Pro motion.
Councilmember Stokes, did you have anything more to add?
No, I'm ready for it.
All right, and so am I. So, could you make a motion, please?
I move to approve ordinance 6737, amending Bellevue City Code Chapter 9 dot 10, nuisances, declaring graffiti a public nuisance.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear support for Councilmembers on recommendations for six months from now. Okay, so thank you. Staff, thank you for bearing with us. It's been a long meeting for everybody in the community as well. Thank you for hanging in there. Next meeting is canceled, so we will resume on May 22nd. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.